This is May 5, 2020, and I'm calling the Iowa City Council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Burgess.
Here.
Mims.
Here.
Saleh.
Yeah.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Weiner.
Here.
Great. Well, welcome again to everyone that was a part of our work session and now here for our formal agenda meeting and to anyone that is there from the community, we welcome you here as well. Happy to have you all here. I did want to just make mention that our Mayor Pro Tim Saleh is observing Ramadan and around a later time tonight, around eight-ish, somewhere in there. She may be offline and not able to partake during about a five to 10-minute span period. And so if a vote does happen, we'll continue on without her vote for that item, if I understand correctly. Yes, all right. So just wanted to make, yes, just wanted to make mention of that. And of course, we do appreciate our Mayor Pro Tim. Yes, all right. So we have three proclam-- I'm moving on to item number two, proclamations. And we have three proclamations for tonight. And I'm going to read the first two, and then I've asked Councilor Burgess to read for National Public Works Week. And my computer is navigating. All right. So. Whereas Asian Pacific American Heritage Month was first proposed as a commemorative week by Representative Frank Horton of New York and signed into law by President Jimmy Carter with the week's first recognition being in 1979, but was amended to its present form of annual celebratory month in 1992. And whereas the term Asian Pacific is very broad and includes many people and cultures from the entire Asian continent, the Pacific Island groups of Micronesia, Melanesia, and Polynesia, and thus encompasses diverse populations within one group destination. And whereas the contributions Americans of Asian and Pacific Island heritage have made to this society are too many and varied to list comprehensively, but include Chinese Stephen Chu, who built a device to measure gravity while still in high school, went on to win the Nobel Prize in Physics, and is now director of Berkeley National Laboratory; Taiwanese Yo-Yo Ma, a musical prodigy who made his debut at Carnegie Hall at the age of nine, and has earned more than a dozen Grammy Awards; Vietnamese Maya Lin, who at age 21 and still a student at Yale, won the design contest for the Vietnamese Veterans Memorial in Washington, DC; and less than a decade later, designed the Civil Rights Memorial in Montgomery, Alabama. And whereas, in our current fight against the pandemic COVID-19 pandemic, we must condemn the racism and xenophobia some have displaced against people of Asian and Pacific Islander heritage. Viruses know nationality or race are able to emerge in humans in a variety of ways and should not be attributed to any nationality or location. And whereas, as the transcontinental railroad built by over 12,000 Chinese laborers physically united this country 151 years ago, so should we now unite in spirit and celebrate the accomplishments and contributions of people of Asia and Pacific Islander heritage rather than succumbing to irrational fear. Now therefore, I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2020 to be Asian Pacific Heritage, American Heritage Month. And here to receive this is Ashley Lindley from our Human Rights Commission.
Thank you, Mayor Teague. As a member of the Iowa City Human Rights Commission and a citizen of our community, I feel Asian Pacific American Heritage Month holds even more meaning this year for many of the reasons that you mentioned. There are many Asian Pacific Americans who have created great and profound impacts, not only in our nation, but throughout the world. While I could spend hours telling you their stories, I will instead just choose one which has particularly resonated with me at this time. This story is about an Asian American man who used his own position and power to stand up against injustice. His name was Dr. Ho Feng Shan. Dr. Ho was the Chinese Consul General in Vienna during World War II. When Austrian Jews attempted to flee Europe after witnessing the terror of Kristallnacht and Auschwitz, many countries refused to accept Jewish refugees for the fear of upsetting Nazi government. Dr. Ho defied superiors' orders and decided to assist Jewish refugees by giving them Shanghai visas. Because Shanghai was an open port city with no immigration controls, travel there did not require a visa. However, by issuing one, Dr. Ho ensured that each of these individuals could get transit papers to escape to other places all across the globe. His name and the Shanghai visas spread like wildfire throughout the Jewish community. And when Nazi authorities confiscated the property housing his embassy, Dr. Ho, not wanting to be daunted, used his own money to open a new office to continue his work assisting the Jewish community. There is no way to know how many lives he saved after issuing thousands of Shanghai visas. However, he chose to keep his work in silence and in private, and no one knew of much of the work that he did until after he died. He did retire to California, becoming one of our fellow Asian Pacific American citizens here in the States. But it was his daughter, in fact, who discovered by accident the work that he had done. After researching a story she had learned about him where he confronted the Gestapo to save his Jewish friends. In his memoir, which was published in 1990, he stated, "On seeing the tragic plight of the Jews, it is natural to feel deep compassion and from the standpoint of humanity to be impelled to help them." I would like to state that prior to a few weeks ago, I had no idea who this man was. I heard his story and could not help but feel inspired. I feel better knowing that this incredible man existed and that he was able to do something so hard and brave simply because he knew it was the right thing to do. Now is a time for compassion and bravery. I think we should support our friends and neighbors that they face the backlash of a virus that they have no control over. They cannot control the color of their skin or the origins of the virus. And while we cannot control others' fear, we can stand strong in the face of racism and xenophobia by actively supporting and caring for Asian Pacific American and Asian Pacific Islander community members. I ask you to consider Dr. Ho's words. It is natural to feel deep compassion for our friends and larger community and to be impelled to help them. We have many amazing Asian Pacific American-owned businesses here in Iowa City and the surrounding area. Let us support and honor them, show them the dignity and respect that they should be afforded as every other individual in our community. Thank you again so much, Mayor Teague, for this proclamation. I am honored to accept it on behalf of the Human Rights Commission.
Thank you so much for being a part and for all that you do for the Commission. Our next proclamation is National Police Week. Whereas in 1962, President John Kennedy set aside this week to pay tribute to the law enforcement officers of this nation and to memorialize those who have fallen in the line of duty. And whereas the police officers and their support staff in Iowa City work with courage and dedication to enforce the law fairly, to reduce crime and violence, and in general, to improve the quality of life for everyone in this community. And whereas the dedicated men and women who have chosen law enforcement as a career often face unknown and extraordinary risk and danger in preserving our freedom and security. And whereas these women and men, our fathers and mothers, sisters and brothers, sons and daughters, and so we give gratitude to their families for supporting them in their career. And whereas officers to the Iowa City Police Department play a growing role as ones who promote harmony and mutual respect among citizens in an increasingly diverse population. And whereas, as we wish to give everyone an opportunity to appreciate and thank the men and women of the Iowa City Police Department who dedicate their lives to public service. Now therefore, I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the week of May 10 through 16, 2020, the National Police Week in Iowa City and urge all citizens to partake fully in this observance. And to receive this proclamation today is interim Chief of Police Bill Campbell.
And Bill, you'll have to unmute yourself. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, there we go. Mayor, it's my honor and privilege tonight to accept this proclamation on behalf of the men and women of the Iowa City Police Department. We are working and living in a time that's very unusual and many challenges to it. Those challenges certainly carry over into a long term and public safety in general right now. And we certainly seek the support, not only you, but the entire council and the entire community as we embrace the challenges we have before us. It's truly a joint effort that we undertake with the community and with council to make this community a safe and wonderful place to live. So it's with great, again, with a great sense of honor and pride that I accepted the proclamation tonight. And again, thank you for the support that you give us as a police department.
Well, thank you, our interim chief. We really appreciate you stepping up during this time. And thanks to all of the police that work here in Iowa City. And now at this time, I'm going to ask Councilor Burgess to give the last proclamation.
This is for National Public Works Week. Whereas, the staff of the Iowa City Public Works Department focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital, that are of vital importance to a sustainable and resilient community and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the city of Iowa City. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of our public works professionals who are responsible for maintaining, improving, and protecting our transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our community members. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the community members and civic leaders in Iowa City to gain knowledge of and maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs. And whereas, the year 2020 marks the 60th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, and it should be recognized as the rhythm of public works. Now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Bruce Teague of Iowa City, I do hereby proclaim the week of May 17 to May 23, 2020, to be National Public Works Week in Iowa City and urge all community members and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public work and to recognize the contributions which public works professionals make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. To accept this proclamation is Iowa City Public Works Director Ron Knuckey.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's been my great pleasure for the past five years to lead the public works team. On behalf of the 153 employees in the Iowa City Public Works Department, I'd like to thank you for this proclamation for the 60th anniversary of National Public Works Week. When the theme "The Rhythm of Public Works" was chosen last fall, no one knew what COVID-19 was. With the challenges COVID-19 has presented to providing this essential services to Iowa City, the Public Works Department and the city of Iowa City have not missed a beat. Thank you for this proclamation and your continued support for the Public Works Department.
Thanks again for that proclamation and thanks for all the work of our Public Works Department for certain. We're going to move on to items number three through eight. Could I get a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended?
So, Taylor. Welcome, Saleh.
All right. So we're going to go into public discussion. Well, we're actually going to go into council discussion about this. I know that there's item number eight, C, that people want to mention. And I've asked our city manager Jeff to kind of talk about this item first, and then council can chime in after. The other thing that I wanted to mention is for our public comment by the community, that we will allow time for the public to comment. And at that time, if you are using Zoom from your computer, you'll see a button at the end at the bottom right where it says raise hand. That's how you'll be able to inform me that you would like to address a topic on our agenda. And then if you're on your phone, callers, you can press star nine, and that'll raise your hand on the phone. So I just wanted to kind of just let everybody know, at least the process for the meeting with public comment and also city staff, as well as counselors. You may want to mute or unmute your phone as you're talking, or mute your computer. So, all right, we'll have our city manager speak, please.
Okay, Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity tonight. I want to talk about our prairie planting project and give you a little bit of history there and then focus in on the one park in which you've heard probably the most pushback, which is Willow Creek Park. We started our natural area master plan process in 2016 and did a full inventory of our, of our natural areas. And then as part of that master plan, really kind of set the table for enhanced maintenance of our prairies and also looked for opportunities to expand prairies throughout the, throughout the community. And one thing to keep in mind with prairies, the geographic location of your prairies matters quite a bit. The benefits of a connected prairie system are far greater than isolated prairies. So as our, as our staff, as, as the council adopted that master plan and our staff looked towards implementation, we did a number of things to prepare for an expansion. Once, one is we realigned our park staff, our park maintenance staff, to make sure that we had dedicated staff to maintaining the prairies, which we did, I believe, last year, maybe about 18 months ago. And then we've increased budget resources for contracted management of our prairies as well. And we've targeted our grant efforts to our natural areas. And Council, you've had the fortunate task of trying to, of accepting some of those grants in recent years. Hopefully you've maintained, you've noticed an increased maintenance of prairies in the last couple of years. We've been doing, again, more controlled burns and things of that nature. Actually, Kiwanis Park, which is on this list, was due for a controlled burn this year. We put out a press release on that and then ultimately had to cancel it with the COVID situation. So that's one that you've heard a little bit about. We, last year, planted about 25 acres of new prairie in the community. And this year, our plan was to move forward with 86 more acres of prairie in the community. This was really a challenge I gave to staff as part of the climate action process and trying to accelerate those actions. So I really challenged them to look at our park system and think of areas where they could plant more prairie and kind of accelerate that benefit to the community. But we've heard a number of residents with concerns, and we want to be responsive to those concerns. So at your last meeting, you did approve the contract for all 86 acres. I've been working with Parks Director Julie Seidel Johnson to start to scale that back a little bit based on some of the feedback that we've been receiving, particularly looking at reducing the amount of prairie that we'd be planning this year in our park system in areas that the public has indicated and which there's an active use component in those areas. So one, our staff tried to identify areas that were not heavily used within the parks. That's based on their observation of being in the parks on a regular basis with their maintenance activities. But we are hearing from the public in those areas that in some of those cases where we have planned prairie, there indeed was use of that. And certainly moving forward in this environment, there may be more demand for open space in parks, and we want to be responsive to those concerns. So we have, what I would like to do with council's blessing is reduce the amount of prairie with our park staff. I think we could go from about 86 acres to roughly 50 or 60 acres and focus those areas on, areas that are more remote from residential areas, focused along waterways where prairie provides significant benefits. So our creeks and rivers. And again, just less populated areas that I think can provide great environmental benefit, but not draw some of the criticism that you've heard. So I know there's a lot, a lot of folks here tonight that wants to address specifically Willow Creek. And this is a bit impromptu, and I hope, I hope it goes okay. But I wanted to share an aerial image of Willow Creek and then talk to you about the areas in which we had proposed prairie and then our current line of thinking with Willow Creek right now. I do understand the council's need to discuss this. I do want to, however, remind you that this is the prime opportunity for us to be planting prairie. And so if we want to get a project going this year, we really need some quick directions so that we can have the professional contractor get started on that yet this month. So I'm going to attempt a screen share here real quick. Okay. Are you viewing my screen here?
Yes.
Thank you. So you see an aerial of Willow Creek Park here with Benton Street to the north. And hopefully you can see my cursor here. We've got Benton Street to the north, and we've got Teg over here to the east. So originally, we had proposed prairie largely in this open space up here, all throughout this area here. As we moved down further into the park, there was an area up here that's used. There's some backstops there. And then this was very active use here. We had proposed prairie back in this area, in this area along the creek. The creek runs here along the trail. And then in a couple of pockets right here in the park as well. And after reviewing all the public feedback, we would like to scale that down considerably now, really focusing on the creek corridor. So you can see the creek come in here under Benton. And the residents in this area have noticed a lot of work along the creek here in the last several months. We've been removing a lot of trees that were contributing to some erosion along the creek. And so what we'd like to do as part of that plan was to establish a prairie buffer along that creek, which would be, provide a lot of benefits for that creek in the long term. So we'd like to keep a strip of buffer along the creek up here. But this area over here would remain as is, and some of this area here would remain as is. Again, just really focusing on that creek buffer right here. As we get down into the heart of the park between Teg and Cambria, this is probably the area we heard the most about. So we would abandon the plans to plant prairie in this large, open green space. However, we still would like to provide additional prairie plantings in this area, which is between the trail and the creek, again, providing that buffer between the creek here. And then in these two small pockets here, this one being of critical importance along the creek here, and this little pocket here as well. So again, we would move away from planting in this large, open area, in this large, open area, and reduce the scope in this area just to really focus on that creek corridor. We've also heard a little bit on, on the prairie down here in Kiwanis Park. And real briefly, I'll touch on that. We have, we would like to expand the prairie out in this area and here. Originally, we had proposed more, more prairie right here. This is an extremely wet area. With the construction of this trail, this area holds more water than it had in previous years. And so this was a natural kind of location for additional prairie. Given some of the public feedback, we would move away from that and still look to expand this prairie here. And I certainly know that there's been some commentary on our ability to maintain that prairie. I have full confidence that we can maintain that prairie. As I mentioned in my intro, we had a prairie burn scheduled early this year. Our staff has done extensive work to get that prairie back in good shape after, I think it was in disrepair, really in the early part of this, this past decade. So I think, I think we can do that. And as part of the reduction in scope of, of our contract with our environmental consultant, we can put a little bit more emphasis on speeding up the maintenance of this area here, too. So those are the two areas where we've heard from the greatest number of folks. Again, we make adjustments elsewhere throughout the 18 locations, focusing mostly on remote areas and those areas along waterways, creeks, and rivers. And I'm happy to answer any questions from the council.
One of the questions that I had related to the public comment that may come forth tonight. We know that this was started in 2016, and of course, last council meeting, we kind of moved it along with the vote. We know that the public has weighed in on the proposal or their approved plan. Staff, I think you all did a great job at listening to our public and creating a new solution based on some of the comments that have come forth. I, you know, heard from the counselors during our work session, talking about the need for public input. And so I wonder if we wouldn't provide some type of a opportunity for public input on even the revisions, because we can go forth with the revisions as you presented, and then we may have, there might be some more thoughts within our community. I, I do know the challenge it is when we're talking about working in a park area, bringing, you know, this type of prairie. People do enjoy their parks. They like it somewhat the way it is. We have climate action goals that we need to achieve. And there are some more relatable things that the prairies will bring a benefit within our community. And so that would be my thought process to just see what either staff or council thinks about just offering an opportunity. Right now, this is a one-time fix, but I think in general, we really do need to think about engaging the community, giving them some type of opportunity.
My comment to that, Bruce, this is Susan Mims. My comment is, I think as Jeff mentioned earlier, when we're looking at doing this kind of planting, there is a relatively short window in terms of getting things done. And I, I feel comfortable that staff has really taken to heart the public input that we have gotten in response to the original plan and has made some pretty major modifications to hopefully accommodate the most significant response from the public. And so because of that timeframe and with the contract already being approved, I'm comfortable letting staff proceed with the changes that they have made, given that public input. I'm just concerned if we, if we're going to try and allow another iteration of input in response to the staff changes, that particularly in this kind of environment with the inability to get together for meetings, trying to get that kind of feedback in any meaningful way could delay things too much. And so I'm comfortable that staff has really taken to heart those, those comments from the public.
I agree with Susan. This is Laura Burgess. And I think having that balance is really critical in this moment, because, you know, we obviously misjudged what some of the priorities for the use of those areas might be, given our attempt to balance the priority of the natural areas plan against the park use for other, you know, other uses that people have identified that they feel maybe aren't compatible with the prairie. But I think staff has done a really good job of addressing the concerns that we've received and acknowledging those concerns. And I think that, you know, we, we entrust them to be able to communicate effectively, you know, what the sort of the final plan will be. I think I'm comfortable moving ahead. I think Jeff, you know, having you be able to show us what the areas were. I do think your cursor maybe wasn't catching up exactly with what you were saying. So I think maybe just making sure that we have a well-publicized release showing what that modification would be, so people really know what will be happening, so that we don't miss another year of being able to establish some of these places that have been in the plan for several years, but also addressing the community concerns. And I, I'm just thrilled to see so many people reaching out to us and acknowledging that, you know, they, they understand how to get in touch with us and how to provide that feedback and that staff can be responsive. So be better if we can do it more on the front end, like you said, Mayor. But I think, I think this is a really good plan to keep moving forward on those, that priority for our natural areas.
This is Pauline. And as I mentioned in the work session, John Thomas and I had met with several of the residents from the Willow Creek area neighborhoods. And they, they just expressed frustration that they hadn't been included in some commune engagement on the discussion of where these prairies would be. But I, I think from what I gathered, them listening, John and I listening to them and them writing in and making phone calls, I would hope that some of that frustration has been relieved and that they would be pleased with the results. And as I am, I, I again, thank you Jeff and Julie for looking at reducing the scope of the project and looking at those areas that might be less controversial. So I do hope that those residents are pleased. I'm encouraging them to reach out and call Jeff and/or Julie and talk to them or any of the members of the council if they still have some concerns.
I'll, I'll just add to my comments during the work session. You know, I appreciate the work staff's done to revise the scheme. You know, as Laura mentioned, Jeff, in your presentation, it was a little hard to see exactly. Your cursor was not quite in sync with, with the map. I would certainly encourage staff to, to have in some form a meeting. Because in my view and in my, my work in this area, you know, having a drawing that is very clear and at scale showing precisely what the intent is, is a better communication tool. I would also add that here, here are a couple of the issues that I'm seeing as, as we unroll this plan, which, which is a very ambitious plan, I think. Eighteen sites, eighty-six acres or so. And that is where, when we do prairie in a neighborhood park, that is what I would refer to as a conventional park. Meaning the recreational uses and the landscape treatment is conventional, not natural, in other words. That, and, and existing within a neighborhood where the landscapes and the character of the neighborhood is also conventional. That that is why we see these parks expressed in the way they are. Even, even Hickory Hill Park, which is a natural area park, where it interfaces with the neighborhood feels like a conventional park. So there, there is typically a constraint on the emphasis on natural area development, even in our natural areas where they have that close interface. And I would, I would further say if we're going to do prairie in these areas, which are of a conventional landscape character, the bar has to be very high. The, our, our prairies, and I was looking at the ratings in that natural area master plan, which I think is a very useful document. It rated our natural areas, our woodlands and our prairies. I did not see, and they graded from A to D. I did not see any prairie in the B category or higher. So, and I understand we're ramping up our efforts on this. But as of now, and this was a comment by one of the board members at Hickory Hill Park, the friends. Prairies have a bad name in this town because they're not maintained properly. So it's a, we're taking a risk here, which I think is unnecessary. I really am concerned that we do what we do well in this program. Build on our successes. Because right now, the existing prairies, even in our natural areas such as Hickory Hill Park, are not high-quality prairie. So that's the risk we take. Because the contrast in a conventional park with a low-grade prairie is really going to be dramatic. And, and the public will, in a sense, be ill-informed as to what the actual character of a prairie is if we don't do it successfully.
I'm going to give the public an opportunity to talk, if that's okay, councilors. Because this is an item on the consent calendar. And so I do see one hand raised and I do, I did hear you Mayor Protem. We would certainly allow you to talk. I, I see a hand raised from the public, Judith Foyle. And I would like to ask you to come and speak on this topic. If there's anyone else that would like to speak on this topic from the public, we're going to ask you to raise your hand, which is at the bottom of the right screen, so that we can see your comment, see that you wish to speak on this topic. And this is related to the prairie only. And then if you're on the phone and you would like to speak to this topic, press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. All right, we see four people so far. We're going to go with Judith first, followed by Patricia Benson.
Hello. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can't, I don't know if you can see me. Can you see me too?
We can't see, but we can hear you clearly.
Kind of weird. Okay, well, you should be able to see me.
At the bottom of your screen should be a stop or start video. It looks like a little camera emblem.
It doesn't have it. It just shows a mute or non-mute.
Okay, well, we can hear you if you can.
But that's okay.
And also, I failed to mention because the names are, hands are being raised. We're going to ask everybody to keep their comments to three minutes, please.
Okay. My name is Judy Foal and I have served as the Tynecay Neighborhood President directly west of Kiwanis Park for over twenty-five years. Many of you know me from talking to the council on various issues over the years and volunteering on master plans and commissions in the city. Our neighbors are proud of our park, which we began over forty, with over forty of us extremely involved with planning the park and playground when the park was established. We established a natural play area and a prairie along the southern outer areas of Kiwanis Park. But now mowing has reduced over seventy percent of what we lovingly had hand-seeded and weeded for many years, and the park has been ignored for at least ten. I ignore, excuse me, I organized to try to weed the Mormon Trek Prairie median and later the Roarit Mormon Trek Prairie. I orchestrated and maintained a large prairie at my Coralville church for over twenty years. But I was frustrated last Wednesday to suddenly learn of plans to destroy many greens play spaces across the city, including Kiwanis Park and Willow Creek, and convert them to prairies without input from the surrounding neighborhoods. Kids and the public deserve space to play, including hills. And deciding to greatly reduce those open spaces without input is simply wrong. I'm disappointed in that decision and I and other representatives from the neighborhoods across the city are going to be trying to get you to reconsider. Do not execute the contract for the prairie this year. When I found out about the prairie, I immediately contacted everybody I knew and we got the information around. And that's probably how you ended up finding emails the last few days. I'm disappointed in the process. The city created a neighborhood coordinator position over twenty years ago when there was a need for input. This was a great system. But in the past several years, the Parks Department has stopped utilizing that process to seek input and now appears to unilaterally be making major decisions that impact many neighborhoods. At the five PM work session today, the staff recommended they would reduce from the eighty-six to about sixty acres, totally removing the Villa in Benton. But again, with no input from neighbors about the other areas. So what will be the reduction of the areas for Willow Creek exactly? What about Scott or any of the others? And for the banks of the creeks, will all the trees be moved when you try to stabilize them? This, let me simply put this as a sum. We are asking you today to reduce, have staff reductions of any prairies and reduce the, any prairie changes until there's been input on the change. Number two, instruct the city Parks Department to use the neighborhood coordinator office moving forward for any changes that affect the city in our area. In order to quickly and easily convey these changes and seek input so we can avoid problems in the future like this. And as it relates to the locations described today, we ask that you heed the neighborhood complaints. This issue is, we live in a democracy. We have not been part of this conversation. Thank you for your time. Others can speak now about their specific parks.
Thank you, Judith. We're going to have Patricia Benson, followed by Madonna White. And I also want to, again, remind anyone that want to speak on this topic to raise your hand via the raised hand. And also if you're on the phone, star nine, to raise your hand. Because we're in webinar, webinar mode, no one will, of the public will be seen. So we can hear you, but we will not be able to, there is no video option for you. So we will have Madonna, Patricia Benson, followed by Madonna White.
Hi, I'm Patricia Benson and I've lived along Benton Street across from Willow Creek Park for almost thirty years. Thank you for all your work to keep Iowa City a place we want to live. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. And I also want to thank Councilors Taylor and Thomas for taking the time on Saturday to walk through Willow Creek and Kiwanis Parks to experience firsthand the vitality of these neighborhood parks and hear why residents want to maintain their park. I think the process that's happened here points out the need for community engagement, as John Thomas has, has also mentioned. My neighborhood was unaware of how much park space was going to be changed. Now, prairies are an important part of our environment and a prairie is fine in the right location. But a well-used community park in the middle of a thriving city neighborhood isn't the place. There are other areas within the city where prairies could be established or as, as is being shown now with the reduction along the creek bed. But one thought is, have you partnered at all with the school district? West High has a large unused front green space. Have you ever thought about working with the school district and using some of their available space for prairie development? There's room for a variety of ecosystems in Iowa City. And I was just very disheartened to think that the one closest to me was potentially about to be lost. Because again, our neighborhood parks are used by a lot of people and they're for our mental and physical wellbeing. Those grassy, open areas give us plenty of room to roam and fly kites and throw frisbees and walk dogs and lie in the grass. And then I was very upset when so much of the woods was being removed this winter. Woods support our environment too. They provide nutrients and oxygen that are important. The West Central District where Willow Creek and Kiwanis are located was pointed out in the past in your master parks plan as having a need for more park space, not less. So that's one reason many of us were very bothered by this whole plan. And also, one of the goals was supposed to be creating prairie in areas that are not active-use recreation areas, but rather low-use areas. And that's just not the case for this park. It's used by the neighborhood. It's used by people who come here from other parts of the city. The, the school in our neighborhood, Horn School, uses this park for picnics and field trips and lots of recreational and pickup soccer games and other sports happen here. Because not everybody's able to drive across town to the more costly to maintain sports complexes. We have a lot of apartment dwellers who can come here on foot because they need the escape from cramped living quarters where they lack trees and yards. So again, this is a very active area and especially in this critical time of living with the coronavirus, having these wide-open spaces within a short walk that allow for social or physical distancing is really important. That fresh air and open spaces benefit us all, again, as I said, both physically and mentally. And also the fact that this is so close to residences, to put in a large prairie area near all these residences with the issues of burning and maintenance, that, that has been a big concern. So again, I'm glad to see that there is talk about reducing this to a more reasonable and manageable amount. I do employ you though, to visit the parks in our city, foster communication and talk to those who actually live nearby and use the parks. And again, to put on hold decisions that would take away something so important to people who live near them and use them. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Patricia. Now we're going to have Madonna White, followed by Bonnie Pryor. And I'm asking public to keep their comments to three minutes or less.
Okay. Hello, my name is Madonna White. I am one of the families that lives along Taff Speedway on the north side of Iowa City. We, I am one of eight families left out here following the floods of nineteen ninety-three and two thousand and eight. And was stunned to realize that the city had moved forward and voted on the plan to turn the lots that had been purchased, vacated and then purchased by the city with FEMA money or block grants after those floods, to turn those into prairie. One of the lots is right next door to me. It's a hundred foot by a hundred and fifty-four feet. And that is a hundred feet wide. If you follow along with the burn guidelines in the city of Iowa City, you have to remain fifty feet off any structure. That would be the back of my garage and the back of the garage on the neighbor on the west side. The other three lots that are involved out here, the letter blatantly said that the city is trying to reduce their cost of maintaining these lots. They're not parks, but they're beautiful green spaces. We've been taking care of the one next to us because the city just doesn't. And I found it very interesting to listen to how the city just doesn't take care of the Kiwanis prairies. What's going to happen to this lot next to me, the two down the road and the one across Taff Speedway? These are going to turn into weed patches. They're going to be neglected. We're out here away from the city. We're kind of in a country-like setting. It's marshland. It's wetland. It's forested land. It's not prairie land. And we would like input on what's done with these properties. Nobody contacted anybody out here. There were no signs posted. There was no indication that anything was being decided on these properties at any point in time until I got the letter last week. Again, I feel like David against Goliath because I'm one of eight families out here. But we love our land. My family's lived here for over a hundred and twenty years on this property. And we love it out here. We don't want to see these changes. We don't want this part of Iowa City ruined. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to have Bonnie Pryor, followed by Paula Swiger.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, very good. This is Bonnie Pryor. I live on Cameron Way, which is just about a half a block from Willow Creek Park. I've lived here thirty years this summer. And that park, it most owe me five days a week. And I love that park. My kids have played there. My grandsons have played there. And there are many of us, including Judith and Patricia, who spoke eloquently, that love that park. We're very passionate about it. So I can't say enough about, please put this project on hold. I know the manager trial us, the revisions that were made, and they sound great. But I would back up Councilman Thomas, who said, "We really couldn't tell where his cursor was and it didn't match what he was saying." So we don't have a clear idea of what the new plan is. And I think that I am one of many who was most upset about not being consulted about this at all. There are many people that said there were signs put up. And I'm here to tell you, I cover that park all the time and there were no signs. So we are just happy that we are now hearing about this and that perhaps there is a chance that we can save some of our park. But it was very depressing to see some of those trees come down and wonder what was happening. And I'm glad that you're listening. I'm glad that you're looking for public input. And I would just certainly put an underscore on the comments that that park is well-loved and well-used. I don't believe there has been a time in that thirty years when I've been walking through there that there haven't been many other people in there. And please, please do not turn that. And please, please do not turn that park into prairie. We need that open space. We need room for kids to run and play. And I just don't think with the way we've seen the Kiwanis Prairie maintained, which it has not been, that this would be a good idea. I know that you believe you're committed to maintaining the prairies, but I'm afraid trust has been broken at this point. So I would like to see those plans. As somebody mentioned, a flyer or a map, go out to the residents that live near this park. And I would still like to see a meeting take take place where we can be involved in some of these decisions now and in the future. I think we deserve that. We love this neighborhood. We care about it, and we're happy that you care about it, too. But we just really want to continue to have input, and we want to protect our park. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. We're going to have Paula, followed by Scott Reek.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. I'm Paula Swiger. I'm one of the neighborhood representatives for the Miller Orchard neighborhood. And I have served as a past member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I've been very involved in many issues facing the city of Iowa City and my neighborhood. I just have a couple of points I'd like to make, but before that, the other neighborhood representative for Miller Orchard, Mary Knudsen, was going to speak tonight, but she asked me to let you know that she had a family situation come up unexpectedly and is unable to talk to you. She asked that you review her email and the pictures of Benton Hill Park that she sent in. My first comment is that I really think there's been a notable breakdown in the process of involving the community with input of application of policies. I've sat through numerous meetings when I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I know that it can be labor-intensive and a slow process to listen to and to analyze community input before making decisions or applying policy to unique situations. Not all routine day-to-day city business obviously needs to go through this process. That would slow things down too much. But huge transformative changes affecting a large number of people do. The people who live near the areas impacted by the proposals have a wealth of knowledge about their area and an understanding of the neighborhood intricacies that staff possibly can't be aware of. I'm encouraged to see that there's a revised plan, but I think it should be made public first. And I think public should have time to look at it and to review it and to comment on it. Like Bonnie said, I think a trust has been broken. You have a tremendous resource in Marcia Bollinger, who is your neighborhood outreach coordinator. She should be kept up to date about things like this that affect all of the neighborhoods. And she can assist the departments in reaching out to us citizens about the changes impacting our area. I really do expect transparency from the city of Iowa City. The second comment I have is that I would just ask, which I asked in my email, I'd like to receive formal notification that Benton Hill Park has been pulled from the project as directed by council at your four twenty-one twenty twenty meeting if a consensus could not be reached about the prairie. I'd look forward to receiving that. That's all I have to say. I want to thank you for your service, and thank you for the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you, Paula. We're going to go to Scott, followed by John Swearingen.
My apologies, I had to unmute. My name is Scott Reek, and I live on Spencer Drive here in West Iowa City. I've lived in Iowa City the past seventeen years, and this is the first time I've spoken before the city council. As I mentioned in my recent letter to the council members, I enjoy taking my dog for extended walks down to Willow Creek and Quamish Parks. There, I'm witness to a whole host of individuals and families taking full advantage of the park's wonderful open spaces, whether it be flying a kite, Little League soccer football or baseball practices, college students playing frisbee football, or international residents having an impromptu soccer cricket match. The park and its open spaces are heavily used. And I think you can see the full diversity of Iowa City on display every single day in these parks. As for Villa Park in my immediate neighborhood, it is truly a safe space for neighborhood children who use its open spaces daily and well within the sight and sound of their home. They don't need to travel far from home or cross busy streets to have an open space for kicking around a ball, batting practice, or just rolling down a hill. Even the adults in the neighborhood gather there for impromptu evening neighborhood get-togethers. These get-togethers are a wonderful way for our neighborhood to build camaraderie. I sat through your working session at five and was very pleased to see and hear the discussion that you had and the response you had to the letters you received. I think the adjustments you've made to Willow Creek and Kiwanis are wonderful. And also that the plan is to pull Villa Park off of the restoration plan for now. Oftentimes, our government are only responsive to the frequently vocal. But there are many of us in the city that are passionate. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Scott. We're going to have John, followed by Joe Townsend.
Okay, yeah, my name's John Swearingen. So I live over on Cambria Court. And my property that I own overlooks the park here. And I definitely, I do want to say that I do agree it should have been brought up well ahead of determining to move forward on plans like this that largely impact the residents of the surrounding neighborhoods. And that maintenance of prairies in the city have seemed to be poorly managed here recently. I did used to, for an old job, travel around several states in the Midwest for work and really loved getting to go on runs and and for walks, kind of after finishing work for the day in well-maintained prairie trail areas. And I know that areas can be really well-done like that, and I would love to see more of those areas in Iowa City. I also was pretty upset about the trees getting cut down around the creek and Willow Creek Park. I never really understood why that was going on so significantly, as it was a a nice wooded area, just a nice natural area, and it was kind of a nice buffer, too, between between the park play areas and some of the the roads and the busy streets nearby. I do, too, want to say that regardless of what the decision is tonight and whether things move forward or not, I do think that in order to make sure prairies are taken care of properly, there's, I know there are a ton of great resources, and I hope that those are being consulted. The UNI Tallgrass Prairie Center and University of Iowa, I don't know who manages the prairies up at McBride Recreation Area, but I used to work at wildlife camps up there, and they were really beautiful spaces and really nice, natural, real-looking prairies. But at the same time, I am excited to know that some some things are going on like this in Willow Creek Park area. The reasons I like it is it does reverse some of the habitat loss for certain species, especially pollinators for the area, which which all of us know has been a significant problem really across the nation. I think it'll likely help with that, just kind of vegetable gardens and everything that people are growing in the neighborhood, having more of those pollinators. It's a natural aid against flooding and erosion, which is a big issue both in the creek bed in the area here at Willow Creek Park and some areas that often go unused because the the ground is just soft and wet and mushy and the long grass, that kind of comes about from from lack of mowing because of the wetness. It also can mean less mowing if they're managed properly, along with more plants, given that the trees have already been taken down to counter carbon emissions. And the and the prairie burns, yes, would would cause some problems, of course, with that, but it's negligible, I think, compared to the benefit. It's a great opportunity for kids to learn about native plants and wildlife in their backyard and once fully established. And if taken care of properly, the flowers can be really pretty and can be a nice, just kind of a welcome addition visually to the area. And I do also agree that Willow Creek Park is heavily used. But I do think that, at least in this park, with the adjustments made, from what I could understand from what was explained and showed, I do think it could allow for nice natural spaces and honestly, add some nice walking and kind of running areas in the park. So, but thank you for for letting us all speak and address the issue.
Thank you. Next, we're going to have Joe Townsend, followed by Pam Nims. If anyone else wants to address this topic, please raise your hand. Once we are done with Pam Nims, then we will end public comment on this item.
Hello, everyone. My name is Joe Townsend. I have lived or owned a property for sixteen years in the on Cambria Court during the Willow Creek Park area. I appreciate the council members' time to to speak, as well as the community voicing their opinion on the the issues at hand. I guess, first and foremost, I just wanted to address my concern of not being as as familiar with what's going on in the area. I asked that, as we move forward, that we just continue to share that information and and try to keep the community involved. And those living in the area or impacted in those areas involved with these decisions. I greatly appreciate the fact that the council members are hearing all the input or taking all this input in and are adjusting their plans accordingly. So I greatly appreciate that you've taken that into consideration. I do, however, still have some level of concern based on not being super clear on what the adjustments or changes will be to those plans. As folks have mentioned, like, as Jeff was going through and sharing his information, it was hard to follow along based on the cursor movement. So I would ask, moving forward, that we get crystal clear on what the original plan was and what the adjusted plan is going forward. I do think it's great improvements that we're doing to the parks in the various areas throughout the the city, and I do enjoy going to those parks and spending time there with my family and and friends enjoying those areas. So just wanted to take a few minutes to express my concern, as well as, you know, making sure that hopefully we can work together as a community and council members to ensure that input is heard from the community, as well as we have a good plan moving forward. So thank you for that time.
Thank you, Joe. We're going to have Pam Nims, followed by Emily Scott. And if anyone is on the phone, please start, press star nine if you would like to raise your hand. And if anyone is still on Zoom via their computer, if you want to speak on this topic, please press the hand raised symbol. Welcome, Pam. You're muted.
Yeah.
There you go.
Can you hear me now? Sorry. I'm like one of those commercials. Can you hear me now? Thank you for your time. My name is Pam Nims, and I've lived on Abbey Lane near Kiwanis Park for eighteen years. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight, and I want to thank you all for everything you're doing for our city. I would like to specifically thank council members Taylor and Thomas for meeting with a small group of us who live near Willow Creek and Kiwanis Park on Saturday afternoon. We really appreciated you guys taking the time and and giving up part of your beautiful Saturday to see the park. The recreation area activities in the areas chosen for the prairie conversion in these parks is varied and vibrant and an incredible part of our community. They are, for the most part, not compatible with the prairie installation. The areas are used by residents of all ages and backgrounds. Everything from organized youth soccer, flag football, and T-ball to adult soccer and ultimate frisbee. In the winter, there's sledding, cross-country skiing, and snowshoeing. For non-sporting types, the spaces are used for kite-flying, tai chi, picnics, games of tag, and sometimes just a nice lie in the grass with a book. In the years I've lived in this neighborhood, I have seen almost every activity possible in those spaces. It's important to note that when parkgoers arrive for these activities, most arrive by foot or on bike. It's really hard for one to imagine a more ideal situation for a city park. It's high usage within walking distance of so many constituents. It is a wonderful oasis for all of us on the west side and even the entire city to enjoy. I would ask you also keep in mind the many residents in this area who live in apartments with no yards and those with no way to access a park other than on foot. One thing that's frustrated me over the last, it's been less than a week, I guess, since I found out about this, is that it seems that whenever a disagreement arises over the use of these public spaces, it's really tempting to turn the conversation to a simple for and against. If you're not for the plan that was presented, you must be anti-prairie. Or it's insinuated that constituents don't understand the value of a prairie. I would like to dispel that notion and suggest that many residents who object to the original plan as presented are in support of a well-maintained prairie in the proper locations. However, most of the sites originally chosen for conversion in Willow Creek and Kiwanis are beautiful flat spaces that are actively used for year-round citizen recreation. I greatly appreciate the staff's attention to this feedback that's been provided. In the most recent comments that, from the city manager, though, I understand that there's been an increase in maintenance of prairie lands over the last year, year and a half. I have to say that the Kiwanis Park Prairie is currently in the worst shape of any I've, in the years I've lived here. It's full of volunteer maple trees and weeds. I don't think it hardly qualifies for a prairie. There is a still sign posted that a controlled burn is scheduled, but it, now with the COVID situation, I think it's probably on hold. I would say that when I moved here, there were sample plants and markers that prairie was attempted to be maintained by volunteers almost entirely. It's a near impossible task. So I really hope that there is true plans for maintenance for whatever prairie is put in, because we've not experienced that thus far. If we want the benefit of these beautiful prairies, it is going to take work. At this time, I would ask that you don't proceed with the prairie conversion in Willow Creek or Kiwanis, and you work with constituents about what spaces may be appropriate. You will find us both reasonable and collaborative. I would ask that the maps be produced of these changes and allow for public comment to make sure there's a full understanding of the area's use is understood. Let's ensure we don't create more issues than benefit gained by taking away these important and necessary parts of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. We're going to have our last public comment from Emily Scott.
Hello.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. So I'm a resident who lives off, just off of Spencer, so right across from Willow Creek Park, and I have two young children. We use Willow Creek on a weekly, if not daily, basis, especially when the weather is nice. And I, while I definitely understand the benefits of prairie and understand why the the integration of prairie into the park could offer a lot of different, you know, benefits, both from an environmental and a recreational and visual perspective. I echo the concern of many of the residents about maintaining open green spaces, particularly, you know, my concern is from the perspective of my kids and other neighborhood kids to be able to enjoy that space. And also really just the the property values that go along with having such a beautiful park so nearby. And so I I echo what Pam and others have said, that it would be, it would be nice to have a a specific map with the revised scaled-back plan available for comment before the the plans are finalized. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. We're back to council discussion, and I know that Mayor Pro-Tim wanted to chime in, which you can certainly do that. While, after Mayor Pro-Tim, I do wonder if what might be most helpful for staff is for council to think about what direction they may want to give, if their comments earlier are still the same, or if they want to change it, but we'll have Mayor Pro-Tim speak now.
I guess I was trying.
Go right ahead.
Of course, I would like to thank the staff of taking the comment of the public seriously and go ahead and do some reduction of the, you know, amount of the prairie they're going to do. This is great. But unfortunately, it is still, the public are not sure exactly what what area, just as a lot of people mentioned that they don't know, for Willow Creek Park, they don't exactly which one is being reduced and how much is the reduction and all this kind of stuff. I think there is still disagreement, even though the public is now know that Jeff, as Jeff mentioned, it being reduced, but it's still, there is many people, you know, complain about this. So I really take public comments seriously. I'm a public servant, and I need to listen to what the public need, and the bark also is public bark. If we want to do, if the city want to do everything, anything on the park, they have to contact the public. And I guess all the council agree that we should have have done this, you know, by going back to the public and ask them. Unfortunately, we start sending the letter to the people after we done the vote. You know, this is bad. If I knew that's going to happen, I shouldn't do it, done this. But for now, I just would like to encourage and request that the, you know, we hold on this right now, and we will just have another meeting. Or maybe we have a meeting because they never have a meeting, if we can have meetings through Zoom with Kiwanis and Willow Creek Park and just try to talk about it and come to agreement together. Of course, if you, I'm sure hundred percent, if you guys met again, Uh, of course, if you, I'm sure 100% if you guys met again, uh, with the park department and, uh, the residents, maybe you will come up with an agreement where exactly you should put prairie and where you shouldn't. Please, you know, do, do the meeting and please, I will propose to hold on this right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro-Tim. And I know that you'll be excusing yourself, uh, from the meeting for a little bit. Any other councillors want to address this?
Yeah, I'd like to make a, a few more comments. I think, you know, as we've gotten into this process, it's been increasingly clear to me that on certain of these sites, uh, where the, the conversion of conventional, uh, the conventional treatments of the, the ground plane, the, the lawn areas, in other words, uh, when, there's, there have been some sites where the, that conversion has resulted in what I would call a change in the land use in character of, of that particular park or facility. And I, I tend to want to almost say that, think of it as a rezoning. Think of, think of the process that we go through when we rezone a property. Because that's in effect what we're doing. We're changing the use and character of that particular facility. So there are, you know, certainly the highest profile project, uh, would be Willow Creek and, and Kiwanis. Benton, in its own way, was significant in that it's, uh, you know, there was such a limited area of open space and yet a portion of it was going to be lost. But as I said during the work session, I have since looked at some of the other sites, tried to reach out and have been moderately successful and at least getting a sense that there are, there's a higher level of complexity associated with even those. We heard from a resident along Taff Stee, uh, Speedway. That's, those sites are similar to what you see on, um, in Parfue Terrace where the primary treatment, from what I can tell, has been, uh, open lawn areas on the vacant lots. Some, some have been converted to prairie, but I would say the majority remain open space. So I don't know what, you know, the majority on council will be feeling about this, but, um, I, again, I'm just concerned that, um, we're, we're hearing feedback from those sites where we've, where there had been some sufficiently, sufficient small amount of public engagement that had triggered a larger response. I'm afraid there are sites out there that just no one knows about and will not know about until the work actually begins and we may find ourselves in the same situation.
I, I think I'm hearing from at least three councillors for community opportunity to talk and you bring up a greater point. Is there a larger conversation that needs to be had? I wonder what council wants to do at this point. I feel like we need to give our staff some direction. And so is there another individual that may want to have public engagement? Or would we like to place this on pause and then, uh, maybe talk about this at our, at a future meeting?
This is Susan. I'm still comfortable, as I said during the work session, with the adjustments that staff has made. We've approved the contract and I guess, well, I realize there may be, we, we have an issue here of balancing what we're doing for a climate action purpose, which may take some education, um, of some of the neighbors and users of these parks. But I, I guess I'm also confident that staff has really heard the message that when we have areas that are high use in some of these parks, that we need to be a lot more cautious about where we're putting in the prairie. And they've significantly reduced that and certainly like with Willow Creek, you know, concentrating along the creek and, and some real wet areas and those kinds of things. Again, I'm concerned that we, we could potentially lose the whole season. It's, it's such a hard time to get those meetings set up. Um, I think, again, I think we have learned that we, in the future, we have to do this differently. We have to do a better job of, of public engagement upfront. But I think with the adjustments that staff has made and getting a clearer map, diagram out, um, of all those where they have made adjustments, then I'm comfortable that we continue to move forward.
It seemed like hearing from these folks, particularly in the Willow Creek and Kiwanis area, that there's, there's a little uncertain about the, where the prairie would be. So I think it was Susan mentioned, maybe getting a more clear picture out there. If you could send that to them or somehow contact them rather than having the whole, an entire sit-down Zoom meeting, but somehow they need to be notified and be clear, uh, of where this area is. And I just, I wanted to refocus again. It was brought up by a couple of them about the maintenance. And they aren't exaggerating that Kiwanis Park, um, there are voluntary trees. There's a number of invasive species, garlic mustard, poison ivy.
We can hear you.
Okay, okay. Uh, so I, I would stress again, and I think the neighbors would like to see this too, uh, to see the plan, see the actual maintenance plan and ascertain that it's going to be adhered to.
I just want to quickly say that, you know, I, I have spoken with Jeff by email and, and I'm not suggesting stopping the entire program. There are, um, by my count, something like eight to nine projects which can, in my view, move forward uh, that do not have these, uh, issues that we're, we're seeing that come to roughly 30 or more acres. So I'm not suggesting we shut down the project at all. And in fact, some of these are, are, as I had mentioned with Benton, potentially fine-tuning exercises, not some massive wholesale change to the plan. So anyway, I just wanted to clarify, I, I am not advocating shutting down the, the program.
I'm hearing, I'm hearing two messages very loudly. One is, um, the, as a number of, a number of councillors have commented, one is, um, the, for whatever reason, the lack of public engagement and input in the, combined with the desire to still have that. Uh, and I don't think it's going to be limited to Willow Creek and, and Kiwanis Park area. And the other is sort of a, a broken trust theme that I've heard from several people. Um, that, and I think that's probably not just related to the, the lack of upkeep of the prairie in Kiwanis, but, um, related to the sense of lack of communication with the public. So, um, I'm inclined to sort of, to, at this point, to focus on what councillor Thomas has said, which is really focus on the areas of the, the areas that would be included in this contract that really are, um, not next to residential areas. And if we, it's not that, it's actually, as opposed to organizing in-person meetings, I, it's probably not quite as hard to organize one or two Zoom sessions with neighbors. I'm not sure where, where those go through from here, go from here, but I do think that we need to be extremely mindful when, when we're hearing that there's been a loss of trust as well as, um, as well as this, a lack of communication.
So what I think I've heard now that people have chimed in is that, um, we are going to go forward with what Jeff has suggested for the revisions and ask staff to create, um, a, a plan so that it can be shared with the public. And I know that notification to the public is important and that's what I, I think I've heard from all the councillors. If there's anything else that I haven't heard, please chime in because I think that's the direction that we need to give to staff.
Mayor, I, I just need a little bit more clarification on this because if there's an expectation that we're gonna go out and engage at, at all 18 sites, that, then I need to know that. Or any, any of the sites, the vast majority of them have residential around it in some way, shape, or form. They may not be parks, but there's residential around there. If, if the expectation is that we're gonna go out and, and work with the, the neighbors and, and then kind of based on their feedback, go or no-go on those parks, that's, that's a 2021 project. Um, yeah, I can go do them, we can go do the McColister one out in the middle of an industrial area, no problem. But, um, I, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm understanding you all very clearly and what those expectations are. And the other thing, and I, and I'm not saying this to, to, to scare you off the path you're on. I just want to give you the information. This was a project that we put out through an RFP that was, that was, that was bid on. As we reduce the scope more and more, we're really changing the scope of the project and, and the contractor may walk away. You know, it's, it's not the same project that they bid and, and they have to, you know, there, there's some economies of scale for the prices that we get on these things. The, the contractor may just say, you know what, it's probably best that you just restart the whole thing and, and let's, let's look at it again next year or, you know, whenever, whenever it comes back. So I just want to let you know that that could be an outcome depending on how much we reduce the scope. That was already in the back of my mind a little bit when we were planning to go from 86 to, to 60. And so as we further scale that down, even with best intentions, we may not be able to pull this off. So if you could just spend a couple more minutes being very clear on what the, the council as a whole wants of us, that would help us go forward and we're happy to do, uh, more outreach. But I would think that that outreach needs to be the same for all those sites. And if, and if we're getting the, the same feedback at all those sites, then I would guess we're, we're gonna, we're gonna respond the same way.
I think the majority of the comments, uh, for the outreach was relating to Kiwanis and Willow Creek Park, but certainly council can chime in as to what the intention is beyond that, as Jeff has just mentioned.
I think to Janice's point about, um, both the expression of broken trust as well as the need for additional communication. I, I do worry a little bit about the city council getting into the, you know, exactly this particular, you know, measure of park, the point two acres versus another size. I think that's at a level that is, uh, frankly, a little bit dangerous for, for us to get into. We, we have a process that we know broke down in this particular case. But the individuals who are contacting us, you know, many of them received letters about the project, so they had the opportunity to contact us. We've talked already about how the order of operations, again, broke down or wasn't, wasn't, um, what it needed to be so that people understood where they could best voice their opinion. And in this particular case, we had a plan that is a few years on the shelf. And so that implementation takes time and we're not able to, to necessarily connect the dots for people as clearly and overtly as we needed to, to show, show what was going to happen. But for myself, I think the, the theme of being able to show that we have listened to what we're hearing as far as the need to scale back, to maintain the open areas, to understand that in the, the world that we're in right now with coronavirus and the need to, to distance and that going forward, I am still comfortable trusting staff to scale back the project in a way that can be feasible and take all of that feedback into account. They are the experts on how we can have prairies that will be functional, that will be well-maintained. And I think this is a good opportunity for us to prove to the community that that is our intent and that's what we will carry out. So I, I feel like we've heard the input in a way that can be productive and move us forward so that we don't have to take this plan off the table and, and lose the opportunity for what several people have said tonight will be good improvements as long as they're done right.
One question I have for you is what do you, what would you say for notifications to the public, public at this point?
Are you asking me, Mayor?
Yes, I'm, yes, yes. Cause I thought that was one of the things that Jeff wanted to know was if the outreach was, where's the outreach, if there is an outreach?
Yeah, I think, I think press releases that have the actual map at this point would be, would be really helpful. Letting the wider public know that this is what we're doing. I think it has to be framed in a way of this is moving forward, that the council, you know, if, 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 if that is the will of the whole council, I'm speaking for myself, but that this is what we have approved and letting everyone know so that they can hopefully have buy-in as well, that this will be done in a way that is respectful of the concerns that have been raised in the different areas. Um, so that, that's what I was imagining is the, the very impromptu presentation that Jeff gave this evening to communicate that widely, um, as to the areas that, that will be sort of the final plan. Because the, the plan that we approved was communicated in the packet. And I think if we just have something that's a little more precisely, this is, this is the plan as it will go forward to let people know that that is what's happening.
Thank you.
Um, I think you said it very well, Laura. Thank you.
I'm seeing some nodding of heads, so it sounds like a press release of the plans is a potential. Um, would anybody think that, um, something inside the park might be appropriate?
I'm seeing two. Noticing that there is going to be a change at these particular sites?
It would be notifying of the change at the particular sites and, and really the changes that were proposed tonight.
Well, that's, I mean, as I mentioned earlier, I, on these sites that are going through significant alteration, uh, I tend to view it almost as comparable to a rezoning. So the notion of noticing that on the site, uh, the sites affected, uh, of what the changes are going to be, uh, might, I think, could very well be useful and perhaps even more useful than a press release in terms of reaching the people who are going to be impacted.
I guess personally, I know we, I hear what you're saying, but I don't know that we could make this, you know, that type of a, a process where it's, it's the same as a rezoning, but I.
I'm not, I'm not saying go through that literally like a rezoning, but as we've said, there was no public notice of these projects. None, other than the, the limited, uh, interface that's, that's taken place. I reached out to Mandeville Heights. That's how they learned about, um, Crandic Park. They did not, they did not know about that project. So there's a, there's a real potential void out there. And that's the question is how do we make at least a, a minimum amount of contact that these projects are moving forward?
So I do think that, um, I heard press release in agreement by most as well as something in the park to notify the residents.
Yeah, Mayor, definitely in the parks and with a, with more of a clear picture of, of the diagram of, of where it's going to be. Uh, cause even the one we got in the packet two weeks ago wasn't really clear. It was a big blob of white where it was going to be. And I, myself had trouble picturing what that would be. So I think a better graphic, a photo included in, this is the notice, this is what's going to happen. Yeah, I agree.
Jeff, do you have enough?
I, I just want to let you know, we, we can put the stuff in the part, we can put a sign in the parks, but we're moving forward in May. I mean, we're, we're, we're tearing up the grass in May, so we put a sign up and we rip up the grass and it, it's done. So is, is the point to the public notification to educate them what's going on or is it to get feedback to inform the action? Cause that, that's two very different things. I think if we're seeking feedback so that you can make a, a more informed decision on where to move forward, then we can put out letters, we can put out signs in parks. We have to plan probably for, um, a fall, spring, uh, type of start for this work um, and, and potentially rebidding, uh, the, the project depending on the scope. If it's more, um, notifying folks on what's happening, then a press release is totally appropriate. And we would certainly send out corrective letters to those areas where we're making adjustments. So the people that receive the first round of letters know that there have been changes. Um, it's really what you're trying to get at, whether you're trying to seek input to inform your decision or educate on what is happening.
I do think.
My intention was to educate them on, on this is, this is, we've heard your input and this is what it's going to be. I, I didn't mean to go through all the, uh, getting input from them again, because I think they've had a great opportunity to do that. Although we, John and I heard from a lot of them that they didn't get that initial letter. There was just a handful of folks that said that they'd gotten a letter. So somehow we can ascertain that if, if you're talking about mailing to them again with the pictures as well as something in the park, somewhere in some sort of a visible location in the park that shows that this is what, this is the decision we've come to. Thank, thank you for your input and this is the decision we've come to, something like that. I don't mean to go through this whole process again. Uh, but I, as John had said, uh, proceed with those, um, that reduced scope of, of the project that, that you've proposed, Jeff.
I don't, this is Susan. I don't.
I don't, Susan, I don't think at this point there is time or it makes sense to try and put signs in every single park. I think if we do anything, we just do a new press release. I think staff can determine whether it makes sense to send new letters out. Again, I think staff has heard loud and clear what the concerns are in the specific areas. It's not to say we're not going to get some pushback in some of the other parks, but staff has done a lot of reduction. And then I think we have to look at, as Jeff has said, you know, we may not even get this project off the ground at all. With cutting this back from eighty acres to fifty to sixty acres, you know, we may have the contractor walk away and we may be starting over. I think anything additional that we do is probably going to push it in that direction even more. So to hope that we get anything out of this this year, if that is, if that is our priority, is to try and get this moving this year, I think we need to move ahead with staff's adjustments. Because as Jeff said, we're already into May and they're going to start working pretty shortly.
I think there's a lot of value to communicating what we are doing as we are doing it too. So that was my intent with what I think we should do is to let people know what's happening. I think like we heard about the trees that were removed along the creek bank that were causing erosion problems. And that was, you know, there was a good reason for removing those, but we heard individuals being concerned about the trees being removed. So much like in the ped mall when the trees were being removed and there was signage explaining what was happening there. I think just signage explaining what's happening with the project and how it's moving forward, there's a lot of value there. So if that happens in the park, that's great. If staff thinks that's appropriate. But I think just communicating what we're doing and why and that we have good reason to do it and whatever modes of communication we can effectively get out is what I'm advocating.
I guess for me, I think that, you know, what's the point of putting sign there telling the people what we agree to? If we are not going to change anything from the staff recommendation right now, everybody now listening to us, most of them at least, or the people who come online today, or the people are from maybe association, they will, you know, take our message and give it to the people. But I really disagree with the decision. But you know, now you have more people who are supporting, just go ahead and do this. I respect that. But to Jeff's point, I agree with him. What's the point of putting sign there? And we already, yes, we come to the conclusion, nothing has been changed. Now we're supporting the staff recommendation. That means all the people who just talked and they said they need like more change and they need meeting and all this, we are not even, you know, I don't want to say that. We are not putting this in account because we already going with the staff decision. And we're saying, yes, for future reasons, for future purposes, you know, we have to do this differently. But I really, really encourage that we, to have a meeting with, before we just do this, we need to have a meeting with the residents of Fuller Creek Park and the Kiwanis and see if maybe they are agreed to what Jeff says. They just don't know exactly what's going on there. Or maybe there is a minor change will happen. And so we can, everybody will be happy, like win-win situation. You know, that's why I really encourage a meeting with the residents. But if there is no support for that, I don't think we need to put sign there. Maybe we can just go with a press release and say that that's what's going to happen and that's it. So for the sake of the time, if this is going to happen in May. Unless you want to do, you want to change the staff recommendation, maybe you can do that.
So I do think I hear consensus from the staff to go ahead and do a press release. If city staff feels that there's another mode of communication that makes sense, by the next door, you can do that. And we are moving forward with the plans, the revised plans as submitted by Jeff. All right. Are you good now, Jeff? Great, thank you. All right, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the consent calendar as amended. Roque, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Ms.?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
E?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. And can I get a motion to accept correspondence for item six A?
Come on, Taylor.
Second is Weiner.
All right, all in, Roque, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We are moving on to item number nine, which is our community comment. And this is a time where we will ask people from the community to talk about any item that is not on the agenda. Item eight, item eight C, which we just talked about is, was on the agenda. And so that opportunity has passed for that item. But anyone that is, would like to address the topic, please raise your hand. And then I will call on you, if you're on the phone, press start nine. And then I will see your hand raised as well. So I am going to open up the community comment with Sarah Barron.
Hi, y'all. I hope you're doing well. I don't know about you, but I'm exhausted. What a thorough conversation about your consent agenda tonight. Good luck for the rest of the meeting. I have just a few affordable housing things that I want to run past you all. First is I want to make sure that everyone on the council and listening in the public is aware that in her April twenty-seventh proclamation, Governor Kim Reynolds indicated that she would not extend an eviction or foreclosure moratorium for Iowans beyond May twenty-seventh. So we know that that eviction and foreclosure moratorium, the protection offered by that is going away. And we do not have a plan in place to help the thousands of households that will have mounting unpaid bills yet. So that's a real concern. I have a couple of pieces of information for folks who might be concerned about whether they're covered by the federal moratorium on eviction and foreclosure. The National Low Income Housing Coalition has a website where you can type in your address, whether you live in a single-family home or a multifamily property. And you can find out if you're covered under that federal moratorium through July twenty-fifth. So that, that website is N L I H C dot org slash federal hyphen moratoriums. I tried it out today. I typed in the address for Rise Apartments and learned that they are covered by a Fannie Mae-backed mortgage. And so everyone who lives in the Rise Apartments, for example, is going to have some resources available to them through that federal moratorium. That's just one example. So I encourage all residents who are wondering if they're protected under that eviction moratorium to type their address into that database. Also, today is Giving Tuesday. And I encourage everyone to take some time yet this evening to go and donate to their favorite housing organizations. I made several donations today and there's a link to our partners on our Facebook page. I want to let you all know finally that the Housing Coalition is going to be moving forward with a COVID-nineteen housing needs assessment. We've done as a community a pretty great job of responding to the immediate crisis presented by COVID-nineteen. And now, just as you did in your work session with your budget projections, we need to take a medium and longer term look at what might happen in the housing market for both renters and owners moving forward. So we're going to be working with some community partners. I hope you'll join us in that process. What we really hope to do is to get a complete list of the housing needs that might arise, to make some attempt to prioritize those needs and then to look at all the different funding and resources that might be available and see how we can piece things together to have the most stable and comprehensive response possible. I'd really love to talk with you more about that. We'll be working with others in the community to tie that into other efforts that are going on. But we wanted to let you know that that's something that's on the horizon for us. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Sarah. I'm going to have Sheila Z. Thamo next. And if anyone else wants to address council, please raise your hand and keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Okay, so, so Mayor Teague, I'm not skilled in talking in front of the council, but let me know if what I'm about to say, it doesn't fit in into the agenda. And certainly I can back out and wait for another time.
What topic would you like to address?
Well, I would like to talk about the climate crisis and your folks' declaration of a climate crisis on August sixth. I wanted to make a positive comment.
You can talk about that. It's not on our agenda tonight.
Perfect, okay. I just wanted to say that this team, the Iowa City Council, you guys declared a climate crisis on August sixth. And your goal was to reduce carbon emissions by forty-five percent from. I, okay, I hear somebody talking. So the goal was to reduce carbon emissions by forty-five percent from twenty-ten levels by twenty-thirty and to net zero by twenty-fifty. And I supported this council then, when you folks declared the climate crisis. And I still support you today. And I believe that this city, we all need to get behind you as you continue to do the right thing for our future. And I just wanted to make a point about the Mauna Loa Observatory in Hawaii. It's an atmospheric baseline station which measured CO2 in the atmosphere at four hundred and sixteen parts per million as of the end of April. And to note that this is the highest weekly average ever recorded for CO2 in the atmosphere. And they consider a safe level of CO2 around three hundred and fifty parts per million. I'd like to quote the past Mayor Throgmorton when he introduced Greta Thunberg when she came to Iowa City last year. And Mayor Throgmorton said, if we don't do it, who will in addressing climate change? And I'd like to say that we don't have the luxury to disregard solar arrays in our parks, on our buildings and in our backyards because our way of life is being threatened. We need to get off fossil fuels and solar panels in our environment will save lives. So that's my comment for tonight. And I send my thank you to the work that this team, this council is doing.
Thank you. Seeing there is no one else to address council, we will move on to our next item on the agenda, which is item number seven. I'm in, I am sorry. Item number ten, planning and zoning matters. So ten A, rezoning Eastbrook Street and American Legion Road. Orders conditionally rezoned land near the intersection of Eastbrook Street and American Legion Road from interim development, single-family to neighborhood public for approximately two-point-fourteen acres to low-density multifamily residential for approximately ten-point-six-four acres and to low-density single-family residential for approximately twenty-two-point-fifty-one acres. First consideration, I'm going to open the public, open the public hearing. Staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Danielle Sussman, NDS. This is an application submitted by Alan Holmes for rezoning of approximately thirty-five acres, land located on the north side of American Legion Road and east of Eastbrook Street. This land was previously annexed into and zoned a city zoning district earlier this year in January. Approval of the rezoning tonight would allow for a future development of a subdivision consisting of single-family and multifamily housing and a fire station. This exhibit shows the boundary of the thirty-five acres north of American Legion Road in the yellow hashed for a certain amount of area and then white hashed and a little bit of red. The rezoning is for three different zoning classifications. I'll walk you through those on this exhibit. The circle or the square outlined in the red dash is for P-one neighborhood public. The next area just outside of that outlined in white is for low-density multifamily residential. That's approximately eleven acres. And then the remaining acreage, approximately twenty-three acres, would be rezoned to RS-five or low-density single-family. As I just mentioned, that first parcel, first lot essentially would be reserved for a fire station and zoned to the neighborhood public zoning classification. It's shown here in their concept plan on this exhibit. The next zoning classification I mentioned was a low-density multifamily of approximately eleven acres. That does allow for higher-density single-family and low-density multifamily uses. It's intended to provide a diverse variety of housing options such as detached and attached single-family. On the exhibit that they provided, their concept plan, it's shown in this area here, just to the east of the fire station and just immediately north of American Legion Road. And finally, the remaining twenty, approximately twenty-three acres would be reserved for single-family housing, single-family detached dwellings on individual lots as shown here on this exhibit and the remainder of the area to be rezoned. When staff reviews applications such as these, we look at two criteria, the compliance with the comprehensive plan and compatibility with the existing neighborhood. Regarding consistency with the comprehensive plan, we looked at both the Southeast District Plan and the citywide comprehensive plan. The Southeast District Plan indicates this area in the blue outline is the subject property, contain two different intended future land uses. One was shown here in the darker yellow, which is medium to high-density single-family and townhouse. And then the kind of lighter yellow, which is the low to medium-density single-family and duplex intended uses. The other criteria we look at is compatibility with existing neighborhoods. As you can see here, this exhibit shows the existing zoning to the east, which is also a single-family residential. And then the interim area and then the subject property, excuse me, and then the area already developed to the west is RM twelve, the Eastbrook Flats area. So this concept blends density from lower on the east to slightly higher to the west and matches the existing neighborhood in that manner. We also looked at sanitary and storm sewer impacts from the development to make sure that those are being accounted for. Also do focus on the access and street design for developments, even though this is still just a concept plan and not the detail of a preliminary plat. We do look for support of the comprehensive plan for the interconnectivity of the street network to be provided for, to allow for vehicle, pedestrian and bicycle traffic to safely and effectively circulate and connect to surrounding neighborhoods. The attached concept plan accomplishes the objectives of the comprehensive plan in that manner by extending Eastbrook, which is the street here, to connect to the network and as well as making connections to the existing neighborhood on the north end. Despite the slightly higher planned density, the RM, in the RM twelve zones, the housing diversity and street connectivity shown in the concept plan aligns with the policy direction provided for in the Southeast District Plan. So this shows you the steps that we have accomplished to date. The annexation and rezoning, which happened earlier in two thousand, this year, end of last year. The blue stage is where we're at currently. So when land is annexed into the city, it's assigned usually an interim development zoning standard. At this point, they're requesting to move from that interim development zoning district to the specific three zones that have been requested tonight. They have included a concept plan with this rezoning to illustrate how they can accomplish the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. However, in the future, they will still need to submit a preliminary plat and a final plat with those more specific details included for review both by the Planning Commission and by city council. So based on a review of the relevant criteria, staff did recommend approval of the proposed rezoning with six conditions. At its April second meeting, by a vote of seven to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval of this rezoning subject to conditions, which I'll walk you through here in a moment. The conditional zoning agreement has been signed and turned into the city clerk. The applicant did not hold a good neighbor meeting in this instance, but we actually advised them not to due to COVID restrictions. Instead, the applicant mailed out pertinent information to the neighborhood and solicited comments that way. Comments were received and expressed at the Planning Commission meeting. So in regards to the six conditions that I mentioned, the first one is really a carryover from the first rezoning and the annexation and is a restatement of the city's policy on affordable housing. So that has just simply been carried forward to keep it as front of mind for everyone. So that has just simply been carried forward to keep it as front of mind for everyone. The remaining conditions deal with a variety of things, including the need for a final plat to be filed, conformance with the concept plan as shown and presented tonight, also requiring trail connections to the city's park and trail networks. Those were highlighted in one of the exhibits I showed you a moment ago, making sure that the developer is aware that those connections are their responsibility in some manner. Also that a permanent drainage use might be provided and that traffic calming be addressed at plating because of the concept plan expressing some of the block sizes. Staff was interested in making sure that traffic calming would be available to address any concerns about traffic speeds in the neighborhood should it need to be. That will be accomplished at plating. So that concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer questions.
Well, thank you, Danielle. So like, no questions for now. All right, public discussion. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. If you're on the phone, press star nine to raise your hand. John Yap.
Hi, this is John. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening. I'm representing Allen Development. We had a good discussion of planning and zoning on this project. And one of the big factors is this is the first project under the city's Affordable Housing Annexation Policy. Our plan, it includes a mix of housing types, a mix of income levels. It transitions from multifamily to the west to single-family on the east, consistent with the single-family neighborhood to the east. It is an infill project with existing neighborhoods to the northeast and west and a senior care facility to the southwest. We're about one-half mile from the new Hoover School. And with the American Legion Road reconstruction, there will be a continuous sidewalk to the school. You'll also see on the concept plan is a future fire station. We've been in discussions with staff, and that fire station parcel is a part of this rezoning and concept plan. As Danielle said, we were not able to have a good neighbor meeting, but we did hear from neighbors. One of the concerns was preservation of the tree line on the east side of the project, and we do intend to preserve that tree line. We've also had several positive comments about the trail connections, the sidewalks, and better access to the dog park. The multifamily buildings that you see are proposed as stacked flats. And we intend to incorporate form-based code elements into those buildings. These buildings are eight to 12 units each. In other words, they're about a third of the size of the existing multifamily buildings bordering on the west. We've named the project Community View. And in this time, we hope to build on a sense of that community in this area. And I'm glad to take any questions.
Thank you for addressing council. Is there, I don't see any other hand raises. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to address this topic? Seeing none. I'm going to close the public hearing. All right. Could I get a motion to give first consideration? Oh, actually, before I do that, one thing I felt to do is ask if everybody was... Well, I guess at this point, we already closed the public hearing. So, all right, move to give first consideration.
Move. I saw that.
Second, Mims.
All right. Before we continue with our discussion, and... Is council inclined to vote with P&amp;Z recommendations on this item?
Yes.
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 I hear the majority saying yes, so I am sorry. I should have did that before the closing of the public hearing. So council discussion.
This is Pauline. I just see a lot of positive things about this. As John Yap had mentioned, it is the first of the annexation with the requirement for the affordable housing. And I would hope that they do do that rather than a fee loop. That would be wonderful. I was pleased to hear because I thought it was in close proximity Hoover School to hear that it is within a half mile and W sidewalk to the school, which is wonderful. Maintaining the tree line is great, extending that street. There's just a lot of positive things about it. I'm really impressed with it. Very well thought out. And of course, the fire, being able to have a fire station.
I did have a question for John. John mentioned the, you referenced the form-based code aspects of the project. Could John speak to what, in more detail, what that might mean?
We can unmute John. Am I muted or unmuted?
We can hear you.
Okay. We did provide staff with some inspirational images that we obtained from the Form-Based Code Institute. Identifying some of those elements, it's difficult to convey without being able to present a visual to you.
Okay.
I was just curious about the affordable housing element. John, thank you for calling out. This was our first annexation with that requirement. And as I understand, there's three options for how to achieve that. Do you know which the developers pursuing?
Our intent is to have the 10% of the units onsite or possibly off-site nearby, next door possibly, but we've not ironed out all the details.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mims?
Yes.
Celi?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passes 7 to 0. Item number 11, utility rate, public hearing resolution. Ordinance amending Title III, entitled City Finances, Taxation and Fees, Chapter IV, entitled Schedule of Fees, Rates, Charges, Bonds, Fines, and Penalties, Section 3, 4, 5, entitled Solid Waste Disposal. Second consideration, could I get a motion?
So.
Move by ma'am, seconded by Thomas. Public discussion on this item. If anyone would like to address this topic, please raise your hand. And if you're on the phone, press star nine. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Celi?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Motion passes 7 to 0. Item number 12, radon test and delay effective date. Ordinance amending Title 17, entitled Building and Housing, Chapter 5, entitled Housing Code, to delay the requirement for radon testing and mitigation in single-family and duplex rentals until July 1, 2021. Could I get a motion to waive second consideration?
I move the rule requiring ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting, at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Move by ma'am, seconded by Weiner. Public discussion. Would anyone like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand or press star nine. Seeing none, council discussion.
This is Pauline. I just wanted to point out and emphasize a statement that the staff made in the background information that they encourage property owners to use this time to schedule inspections and mitigation, even though we're making this proposal when units may be vacant. Because as we know and as we've talked about, you know, testing for the radon is really very important. So the sooner they get on it, the better. So if a unit's going to be vacant, you might as well continue to take that opportunity to do it.
I was going to call out the same thing, so thank you, Pauline. Because it looks like that if you test during this year, then you can document the compliance starting July 21.
Right.
All right, roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Celi?
Yes.
Motion passes 7 to 0. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
No, moved.
Move by ma'am, seconded by Taylor. Anyone like to, well, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Celi?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes 7 to 0. Item 13, 2020 Bond Resolution. Resolution direct in sale of $12,145,000, general obligation bond, Series 2020. Could I get a motion to approve resolution?
Don't move, Thomas.
Second, Weiner.
Move by Thomas, seconded by Weiner. And is there a staff presentation on this item?
Yeah, I can give you just a summary of how the sale went this morning. At 11:00 AM, we received bids for approximately $12.1 million of our Series 2020 general obligation bonds. There was a late handout that was delivered to the council tonight. It starts on page 8 through 25, gives a summary of the results of that sale. We're very pleased with the results. Robert "W" Bear was the winning bidder. And they have been the successful bidder on a number of our bond issues over the last several years. They put in a winning bid of 1.55% over 10 years, which we're pretty ecstatic about that interest rate. And so that is some positive news. And in addition to that rate, I received about $867,000 in bond premium. So we asked for $12.1 million, and they're giving us about $13 million in bond proceeds. So all in all, it was a very successful sale. I want to point out that Maggie Berger at Spear Financial and John Murphy at Spear Financial both put in considerable amount of work, and we appreciate their efforts. And we recommend approval of this bond sale.
Thank you. Any questions for staff, for Dennis?
I don't have any questions. I would just like to comment. Jeff had let us know previously that Moody's had given us a AAA bond rating. Again, we're, I don't know, 37 years or something into our AAA bond rating. And it's just really important for council and the public to understand that you don't get an interest rate of 1.55% and an $860,000 bond premium, which, as he said, what we were selling was $12.1 million, and they're giving us $13 million. You don't get that unless you have the top bond rating. And so keeping our reserves up, having emergency funds, you know, keeping our finances managed as prudently as we have for so many decades. And I know we're in a really tough time, and there's lots of questions and asks for money, but we still have to be very cautious because this saves us so much money in the long run, which gives us then that much more flexibility to provide services and help the people in our community at a reasonable tax rate. So kudos to Dennis and his staff, and all the way from Jeff down, and this is fantastic news.
Great. I would agree. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Celi?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes, motion passes 7 to 0. Item number 14, approval of the CDVG Home Budget. Resolution adopted Iowa City's Fiscal Year 21 Annual Action Plan, which is a subpart of Iowa City's 2021 through 2025 Consolidated Plan. Could I get a motion to approve resolution?
Don't move. I saw that.
Second, Thomas.
And look like Erica, are you going to present on this?
Yes, Erica Kugley of Neighborhood Services. I'm going to try to share my screen. A couple slides. Okay, so the FY21 Annual Action Plan outlines how we will spend our CDVG and home funds over the upcoming fiscal year. This is the first action plan within City Steps 2025, which is our new five-year consolidated plan adopted by council in January, which will take effect July 1st. We worked with our consultant, Mullen and Monarch, to complete the document as part of our contract for City Steps 2025. This slide shows our allocation for FY21. We are getting $697,678 in CDVG funds and $511,786 in home funds. This is an increase of about $40,000 for both programs, which is about 6% over last year. This chart is the historic CDVG and home funding over the past 15 years. Just kind of shows the changes. This one is the same information, but it's adjusted for inflation. So while there are some increases in specific years, it's an overall, the overall trend is a decrease in federal dollars for these two programs. The charts did not include our recent COVID-19 CDVG allocation of $422,000. I will get into that in more detail in the amendments that are on the agenda later. Our intention with this specific plan, it was to incorporate broad language related to the pandemic response to allow us to fund progress as necessary under public services, public facility improvements, and economic development, as we expected those to be the types of urgent activities that will need funding. We also added a goal to provide facilities and services in support of a pandemic response. And we plan to begin administering the CDVG CD funds at $410,000 prior to July 1st. But by adding language in this plan about the community response to the pandemic, we hope to be able to continue that process into the next fiscal year as needed and as funding allows. So... So this page shows funded activities, including programs set aside, as well as HDC recommendations for FY21 funding. I'm going to highlight the competitive projects, as many of these are set aside. So first, we have public services. We can use 15% of our CDVG allocation for public services, and we use that as a portion of the agency's funding. These are three agencies that are part of the agency allocation that will be the next agenda item. We'll be using CDVG funds. We have one public facility project this year at Little Creations Academy, where they plan to do a kitchen renovation for the childcare. HDC recommended $78,000 for this project. So that's the second item on your screen. And then moving down to the competitive housing activities, these funding amounts were also recommended by HDC. These include two rental acquisition projects, rental construction, a continuation of the South District program, and outpatient assistance for a total of 28 newer assisted affordable units. In your packet, you have a staff memo from the Community Development Planner discussing, to HDC discussing some staff concerns with a couple of the applications we received this year. The city has recently funded a project at Little Creations for $109,000. With the FY21 recommendation, this total CDVG investment would be $187,000 in this facility. The CDVG program has a reversion of assets provision, which states that if funding recipient, if a funding recipient discontinues providing services within five years of the project completion, funds would have to be repaid. And this is applicable to projects over $25,000. So well, staff supports the mission of Little Creations Academy and feels they can successfully complete this kitchen renovation project. If the childcare closes or moves for any reason in the next five years, it would be difficult to recapture that 187,000. And the city would likely be responsible for repaying that amount with non-federal funds. A similar situation happened with a childcare a number of years ago, but it was a different agency. Our second concern noted in the memo is with the unlimited abilities application. They have no prior experience administering federal funds and have had some compliance issues with rental properties in the past. And again, staff supports their mission, but we do have concerns about capacity to comply with home regulations or the duration of affordability period, which would be 15 years based on a funding recommendation of $60,000. If they are unable to comply, they would have to repay funds and those funds would go back to HUD rather than being able to be reprogrammed in our community. So that's all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
All right.
Susan, I have a question. So with those two concerns that staff has, I'm just gonna ask this real directly. Are these two that you would recommend that we not approve? Given the risk to the city, if, if Little Creations were to close or move, the city has to repay $187,000, which we unlikely could get, not likely that we could get back from Little Creations. And secondly, with unlimited abilities, if they had some issues and the question of whether or not they can handle this money, do staff think that we should not approve those two recommendations?
I don't think that we're necessarily recommending to not approve these. We could, we could give them a, an allocation of 25,000 and then for the Little Creations specifically. And we could shift unlimited abilities to CDBG as well and do 25,000. And then it won't be subject to the reversion of assets risks that I was discussing. You know, I think Little Creations had some stumbling blocks in their last project, but I think they could successfully fill this, fulfill this project. There are just some risk in, you know, in the childcare industry if they were to close in the next five years. So it's hard for me to predict if that's.
Right.
Likely or not. Unlimited abilities is a brand new, brand new to us, I guess, in administering our funds. So I don't know if I'd necessarily recommend not funding them, but there's just risk as they don't have the same capacity as some of our other providers.
I think, I think unlimited abilities is newer in our area. If I, I don't know much about them, but I think they're newer in our area. And this could be their, this is probably their first time get, receiving some city funds. And I would imagine that they need a little more 101 potentially. They're probably not used to the, to the requirements here. The one thing when I hear the 15 years affordability period, that does sound like a long time for 60, even for $60,000. I don't know what the affordability period is for successful living, since it's unlimited, or for any of the other ones that are listed there. 10 years seems about, I think, I don't know what the average is, but I, for some reason, 10 years seems about, about right for 60,000. But if they agreed to 15, then that's great. But I just wanted to add that to the conversation.
So the affordability period is determined by the amount of home funds. And if it's over 50,000, then it's a 15-year period. And I believe if it's over 25,000, it would be 10 years. And below 25,000 would be five years. So it's specific to the home funding.
Great, thank you. All right, if no more questions, then would anyone from the public like to address this topic? I do see a caller on the line. And if you want to time in, please press star nine. Raise, that'll raise your hand to let me know that you would like to speak. Otherwise, anyone like to address this topic, raise your hand. Seeing none, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item 15, fiscal year 21, aid to agencies, resolution allocating human services aid, the agencies funding for the fiscal year 2020, July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. Could I get a motion to approve the resolution?
No move, Thomas.
Second, Salee.
All right. Anyone going to address this from staff?
Yep, I'll address this one again. Erica Kubli with Neighborhood Services. And I'm gonna add a couple more slides.
Great.
Okay, so aid to agencies provides human services funding to local nonprofits serving Iowa City residents. For FY21, we initially anticipated 458,000. However, in January, city council held a joint work session with the Housing Community Development Commission, after which the budget was increased to 675,000. We have two different types of funding pools. Legacy agencies are established, established agencies who have been identified in city step 2025. They receive a bulk of the funding. And then emergent agencies are newer agencies or those that are not identified in city steps, in the city steps plan. Up to 5% of the aid to agencies budget can be used for emergent agencies. So at their February meeting, HDC recommended 650,000 and legacy funding split equally amongst the applicants. So that each agency received about 98.4% of their funding request. HDC did adopt a scoring criteria for the funding applications, but that was not used in this allocation. And that was in part due to the increase in budget for this year. Then at their March meeting, HDC discussed the emergent agency recommendations and voted to award just under 17,000 to emerging agencies. And the remaining 8,000 of the 25,000 that we set aside for emerging was gonna go back to the legacy pool to, to increase their, their allocations. So with this recommendation, with the extra 8,000, the legacy agencies are receiving about 99.7% of their requests. So almost everyone has received their full funding. And you can see those here. You can see their allocation from last year, their requests, and then their allocation, which is just about their full request. And then this is our emerging agency funding recommendations. We received five applications from four agencies. Burge, Johnson County, and Successful Living received funding in FY20. HDC recommended funding in inventory management project for Houses into Homes and then operations for unlimited abilities for FY21. And that's all I have.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do. I've got a couple of questions. On, on the legacy agencies' requests, it looks like almost everybody requested a pretty similar amount to what they had gotten last year, except for Inside Out reentry. They, their request or their allocation was 30 last year and they requested 40 this year. I guess I'm concerned about, well, I guess there's one other one. Prelude was also jumped significantly. But I think theirs had been cut over the last few years and they've been a long-term recipient. Was there any discussion about why some were asking for such big increases? And were others just kind of knowing what the history has been, so they need more, but they didn't really ask for it? I just, when I see these big jumps, especially on some of the newer ones, I get a little concerned.
I'm not, this, this discussion was a few months ago. So I'm not sure specifically the answer to your question. I know that Inside Out is a newer organization, so some, some agencies are expanding their services. So maybe they're asking for more funding for that purpose. But I don't know if I can speak to each agency specifically.
And then the second question, and this may be more for, for Jeff and some others who are involved in discussions, but with the, the newer agencies, the emergent, emerging agencies, it seems to me that when we had the special request from Houses into Homes a year, year and a half ago, or whatever it was, that they indicated to us that if we gave them that emergency funding of $25,000, that they wouldn't be back asking for more. Am I remembering that incorrectly?
No, I think that, that was clear in their requests, initial requests for, to the council. And that was last fall into winter this year.
And then they came back and they got a grant through, through the Climate Action Plan. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct. Ashley can confirm that.
I can clarify, last year they received $5,000 or, I'm sorry, I'm probably misspeaking. I think it was approximately 3,000. That was the minimum amount that they requested through the Climate Action Grants. They received that money for their work to organize their, their organization. And then this year, they also applied again for a Climate Action Grant and were not awarded the, the funds. So they, they did tell us that they had applied to this grant program.
I, I will just say, I didn't agree with the process before when they came out of cycle and said it was an emergency funding. To me, funding for an executive director is not emergency funding. They basically promised us at the time that if we gave them that money, they would not be back asking for more money, that hiring that, that executive director would allow them to go out and do fundraising. I'm not questioning the organization itself and the good that they do, but I think people need to be held to their word. And when they, they were so mad refact and so insistent that they would not be back. So while I support most of these agencies, unfortunately, I will be voting no on this issue. I'm concerned about the large increase in Inside Out reentry and I'm concerned about Houses into Homes. So I will be voting no.
If I can jump in real quick on, on your first question, Susan, on the legacy agencies. I, I don't think, I guess I'm not too surprised. There was, so there was a handful of agencies that increased their, their ask. And I'm going to assume that you're gonna see those asks continue to increase because the, you know, the, if you back up one cycle before this, the council made the decision at the time to fully fund those applications. So now you come, you fast forward one year to this application cycle, I think those organizations have the incentive to ask for as much as they, as much as they can, knowing that the council did that once. And then of course, you all made that decision again to fully fund the program. So for two years in a row, if you fully fund that program, the agencies are in all likelihood gonna keep asking for more money, knowing that the council has, has made that decision two years in a row. So it's just something to think about as you ponder the future of this program. At some point, you can't fully fund everything or that, that, that just continues to grow. You need to, you need to set a cap on that. Unless your intention is to, to, to grow this grant program considerably over the next few years.
And I would have severe concerns about doing that, given our financial situation. And we don't know, which we don't know, what it is going forward with COVID. And I think it's reasonable to, if anything, set, set a cost of living increase to at maximum, but with the idea that, you know, given our financial situation, we might have to make other adjustments to it as well.
Erica, did I understand correctly that you said HDC didn't implement or didn't apply the scoring criteria that they developed?
So in the fall, we, HDC approved a scoring criteria. And we discussed it a little bit at the meeting, but I think in part due to the budget increase, they didn't, they equally allocated the funds rather than going with the highest score, getting fully funded and maybe a lower score, not getting their full funding, which was staff's initial recommendation.
And did that play out with the emerging agencies too? Just because I see that there were some of those requests that were not funded. So I'm just curious if they didn't, if, if scoring criteria weren't applied, how they decided to not fund some and fund others of those?
I think the decision with the emerging aid to agencies was based on the intention of the funds, where these two agencies that they funded had not been funded before. And they were also kind of newer and starting up. I think that was how they based their decision on that. And I'm unsure, I'm unsure if they had a scoring, things, a scoring criteria for that one.
Okay. For, for myself, when we had our joint meeting with HDC, I think, you know, it's incumbent on us to understand the process that they're applying so that we know it is reliable and effective consistently. And so I'm just concerned to hear that they, you know, would have taken the time and the care to develop the scoring criteria, which I think was represented to us, would be implemented and then just said, well, we'll just kind of go with the full funding, including not funding some of those emerging agencies based on maybe different criteria. So I think it's really incumbent on us as council for when this comes around next year to understand when we're vesting all of the discretion, not, obviously not all the discretion. We can, we can overturn this decision. But when we're vesting the trust in HDC to allocate those funds based on a plan that makes sense and that is transparent to the applicant, so they understand what the criteria would be, so that we're not wasting people's time and that it is fair and consistent.
Any other council questions for staff, for Erica?
I don't, I don't really have questions, questions for staff. But, but I do think that I read through a lot of the minutes, the very detailed minutes from HDC. And there was some concern expressed by at least one of the legacy agencies about why the, the scoring, the, the scoring mechanism was not used. That it's, if they're going to go to the trouble is when, I believe that before my time on council, when some of, when some of these issues were discussed, there was, when you're talking about the need to follow process, I believe that if they're gonna set process, that, that would be really great if they would, if they would follow it. And that's, that's something that the agencies themselves or the, the NGOs themselves spent a lot of time on. And it would be nice if that would, if we could rely on HDC to, to use that going forward. My only other comment is that I do have some, I have had some experience with Inside Out. And I would say that from my experience, I believe they are doing very valuable work that's gonna be needed even more now that, that with COVID-19, a lot of, there are more people being released from jails and prisons and they're gonna absolutely need more help. Getting, getting acclimated and dealing with, dealing with life and reintegrating into society. And so I am supportive of that amount.
I agree with you, Giness. The Inside Out, they're really doing a great job. And every year they have new programs and a lot of people start using. And they help a lot of people, you know, who, to support them after they come out from the prison. If, Erica, if you can go back to the, the slide before this. Yes, I, I see also here, like Susan Mims mentions that Inside Out has, from 40, they increased it from 20, I guess, to 40 or something like that. But also look at the behavior services. They increased it from 20 to 40. And also.
I mentioned that one too.
The free medical clinic from 17 to 25. I, I guess because as Jeff said, people, yes, your organization have more work to do. And every year's inflation and everything. I will be definitely supportive of all this as it is. And also for the, I really don't remember the, both of you said Jeff and Susan about House into Home. I really don't remember exactly if they said for that fiscal year or they just said in general, they are not gonna come to the city period. That's, that's my question will be.
That's my recollection, that they said they would not be back because they would use the executive director, that they would use the executive director to raise money.
No, but all the organizations are coming over and over and over. I guess maybe they meant for that year, in the same year or something like that. Anyway, even if they. Anyway, even if they said that I supported, they have to come back again and again, just like the other organizations. They're providing good, you know, services in the community. I will be supportive to this as it is.
We do have the public that want to address this topic, and council will have another opportunity to have discussion. So I am going, any more questions for Erica? I'm going to go to the public, and I'm going to start with Sarah Barron, and I'm going to be following that with caller with the last four digits of 9444. And again, if you are on here and you want to address the topic, please raise your hand. And if you're on the phone, press star nine to raise your hand. Sarah Barron.
Hi all, thanks for the opportunity to comment on this item. I'm in the unusual and a little uncomfortable position of disagreeing with Jeff's comments tonight. I don't believe that this represents an unfettered and unjustified increase from our social services providers. I think what you're seeing here are the fantastic results of all of these organizations coming together to identify what their unmet funding needs were, the ways that the city had not been fully compensating them for meeting the basic needs of residents, and asking for an amount that that truly reflects the amount that they're contributing to our community. I think that organizations showed really a tremendous amount of thought and restraint even in the amount that they asked for. And I would, of course, remind you all that this was really catch up for years of really underfunding these organizations. And I would encourage you to wait just a couple of cycles to see how this shakes out before you make any longer term determinations about how the process is evolving. It is still unfolding, and and I feel extraordinarily positive about the community's commitment to investing, investing in our social service organizations in a way that reflects the value that they have to our community. And I really thank you all for putting in the hard work that that led to this allocation. I think it's just absolutely fantastic news for our community. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. And we're going to go to caller with the numbers in 9444, followed by Selena M. And we're asking everyone to keep their comments to three minutes or less.
Hello, am I on?
You are.
Okay, so this is Lucy Barker from Houses into Homes, and I just wanted to call in to clarify that when we applied for that so-called emergency funding, we did not say that we would not be applying for other funding. In fact, we were strongly encouraged by the council to follow the process. And I remember discussion that our budget would be submitted when we applied for emerging aid to agencies. So we did apply because it was expected that we would join the process, and we did not expect that we would get funding because we had been awarded the 25,000. So I just wanted to clarify that there was, it was not expected that we would just go away and not join the usual process. I think that's what I wanted to say. Selena might have more. Thanks.
Thank you, Lucy. And now we're going to Selena M. on the, Selena M.
Hello.
Hello.
Thanks for, thanks for taking the time to listen. I will just reiterate what Lucy stated. When we went through this process, there was a very, very long discussion toward the end of the decision that not only the council and the city staff expected us to go through these same processes in the future when looking at funding, but also the other agencies. One of the big problems that it felt like others had was that we were being given money without any sort of accountability or having to prove the amount of work that we're doing in the community and and how much need there is for the work that we're doing. So we did apply, and we followed the process exactly as we were supposed to. As Lucy stated, we weren't really expecting to win an award, but we did work very hard on our application. We were very, very straightforward about the work that we do, the increases that we've seen for the need in our services. We have 17 referring agencies right now. So we are having needs fed to us nearly daily. The specific grant that we applied for will really help with safety and our warehouse space and making sure that we aren't injured while trying to serve our clients, and that we can really more efficiently serve people and move more quickly through the work that we're doing. So we were advised to to go ahead and apply, follow the process, and that's exactly why we did so. So thank you for taking the time to listen. We appreciate the committee's recommendation to fund us. We believe that it's for a worthy cause.
Thank you, Selena.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else from the public with their hand raised, we're going to switch over to council discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Fergus?
Yes.
Ma'am's?
No.
Celi? Celi?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was in mute.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one. Item number 16, City Steps. Amendment number two and Fiscal Year 20 Annual Action Plan. Amendment number one. Resolution approving amendment number two to Iowa City's 2016 to 2020 Consolidated Plan and Amendment number one to Iowa City's Fiscal Year 20 Annual Action Plan. Motion to approve resolution.
Motion by Sally.
No, second by Thomas.
And do we have staff presentation on this?
Erica, quickly again, so we are proposing amendments to our current five-year consolidated plan, City Steps 2016 through 2020, as well as our current FY20 Annual Action Plan to fund projects that could enhance our community's response to the impact of the pandemic. The current City Steps Plan ranks funding priorities as low, medium, and high. So we've added Providing Facilities and Services in Support of a Community Pandemic Response as a high priority. By adding this priority need in City Steps, we can direct funds to this purpose in our FY20 Annual Action Plan. In the Annual Action Plan, we have added the 410,422 allocation of CDBG-CV funds that we receive through the CARES Act. With this funding, we've gotten some guidance from HUD about how we can use it, but we are also anticipating more guidance will come in the future. So while we want to get the money out into the community as quick as possible, we want to ensure that we are still following the federal regulations. One of the changes to regulations that HUD has already provided is a waiver on the public services cap for this funding. Typically, we can only use 15% of our allocation on public services. With this funding, there's no limit, which allows us to fund a broader variety of activities. We also know that our funding has to be used for purposes directly related to COVID-19. The city has been working with neighboring jurisdictions, other funding providers, and local agencies to determine how to utilize our CDBG-CV funds. There's also been networking with other communities and national organizations to learn best practices from around the country. Staff's recommendation is to dedicate 246,000, or about 60% of these funds for directly to households impacted by COVID-19. We have had some preliminary discussions with community crisis services to administer those funds. They're already administering the city's security deposit program, and residents are familiar with their services, and they have a strong history of successful administration of CDBG funds with the city. Under CDBG, up to three months of emergency payments can be made on behalf of an individual or family for rent, mortgage, and utilities. So we would work with community to establish specific program parameters. Jeff also recommends that the remaining $164,422 be allocated to nonprofit agencies to address needs resulting from COVID-19. We would open applications for two, three weeks, and staff would allocate based on HUD's guidance for eligible uses of funds and highest need. Applications will be limited to needs that address homeless services, childcare services, mental health services, and food provision. And so with council's approval of this plan, we would begin implementation as soon as HUD provides funds and any needed guidance.
How much money is being, of this is being used to pay for administrative services? And is that going to pay for our staff time, or is that going to community? How is that working?
We haven't gotten guidance on whether we can take admin from this funding. So our plan was to allocate it all for services. I'm uncertain how that will work with community if they request admin fees. But for now, we're trying to utilize all of it for services, and then we would just use our regular admin fees for annual allocation to pay staff time.
Is there a time period that you must have the funds spent by?
No, we don't have any information on a timeframe at this time.
And staff will be making the decisions on who gets allocated the funds?
I believe we would be making a recommendation to the city manager. I don't, I think, I don't know that staff would be making the final decision.
Okay.
Do you know when it will be available for the organization to apply or for?
As soon as we can develop an application and ensure that we're meeting all the federal guidelines, I could, it might be a couple of weeks yet.
On those lines, I was wondering that will there be some type of application process then? Or referrals from agencies? Or how do you think you'll determine the funding? How it'll be dispersed?
I'm going to ask maybe Tracy Heishu, do you want to chime in on this? I see her hand raised.
Sure, am I unmuted now?
Yes.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Regarding admin, the city wasn't planning on using any admin out of the CDBG COVID funds. That being said, if we hire or we use a community partner to administer that direct aid, it'd probably be expected that we would allow admin or their administrative cost to administer those 260-some thousand in funds. Regarding timeline, as soon as if we get your approval to start, we will start working on the application, those procedures, and our intent is that we would, for the nonprofits, they would apply. We give them two to three weeks. We get those applications, we sit down, review them, contact HUD if we have any questions regarding eligibility or who we can assist, or any other questions we have with HUD, make a funding recommendation to the city manager's office, and then enter agreements with those agencies. The purpose was to be able to get these funds out as, basically, as fast as we could to the community and the nonprofits that need the funds. But we needed your your guidance and your recommendation. If this is a plan you want to want to see, and then once we get that guidance, we can start implementing it. So once we do get the funds, we're ready to go.
And now you just want our approval, or you want our guidance also? Like, what to do with this money? I really don't get it.
What we're asking approval for is if the way you want to spend the COVID dollars is on direct aid to households and to, for nonprofits in need of assistance due to COVID. And out of those two, is the 60-40 split okay? Do you want it to go differently? Regarding the direct aid to households, we are going to have to work with community and some of our other community partners to define the parameters, like who's eligible. The amount of money that we get will not be able to service all the needs that this community has. So with these $260,000 of funds, how we prioritize, what 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 services are what's covered? CDBG allows you to pay emergency rent, utilities, like water, energy for up to three months. Maybe we use all three, maybe we cap it at 2,000, maybe we cap it at two months. We don't know. That's what we've worked with community to determine those parameters, those funding parameters. We just need your, okay, is this the, is this how you want the funds spent? And if it's not, then we need to go a different direction or figure out how you want the funds spent.
Yes, I really agree with with you for the, especially for the housing assistance because, you know, especially, we just heard from Sarah saying that, you know, the eviction protection will be like taken away. And I know a lot of people who did not pay for one month or two months, and they pay half rent, and now all this money from last month and this month for the rent being accommodated there. And of course, this money will show up next month too. So, and there is no protection for eviction. I really encourage the staff on the council, you know, the council as well, so we can allocate most of the money for housing, as you guys said, for housing assistance, like direct to family or something like that.
I, I agree with Mazaher on that, I think. And if you're asking 60-40 split, at least the 60 towards the housing, because especially after hearing Dennis's presentation, we're really limited on the resources as far as what we can pull from to help these folks. But we're hearing that there is quite a need out there, so we need to do what we can. So that, I would go that route. Yes, Mazaher?
I want to say something, but I want to give people a chance too. I also thinking about, since the city doesn't have any like money for subsidizing the water, if we can allocate some of it to give it to nonprofit organizations such as the the community or any another organization who have a system in place to evaluate low-income people so they can give them help to the, to their water bill by maybe like writing a check direct after they see their bills, and if they are late, they can write, you know, a direct check to the city of Iowa City for the water bill. The, the, the community used to do that, and maybe this will be completely different from from the housing fund, like maybe some of the 40%, we can allocate it to the water. So in this case, we use it as it should be, and in the same time, we did not put any pressure on the city.
I'm comfortable with the staff's recommendation of the 60-40 split. I continue to, to, I guess I don't quite agree with the water issue right now, Maz. And my reason is, is the city is not assessing any late fees or fines. So people, and we're not disconnecting anybody. So we're not putting any additional hardship on individuals right now if they can't pay their water bill. That gives us time as we go forward to maybe forgive those late bills once we see where we are at as a city, or to help them set up a payment plan. I would rather see that money funneled through to pay gas and electric or rental assistance than focusing on water right now to something.
I will like to just add that next work session, Jeff will be bringing to council some recommendations, so keep that in mind.
Sure.
And I, I just want to clarify, I think what you're saying, Tracy, is that the recommendation is 60% would be the direct payment to household families, individuals that would be assessed for eligibility through the third party who's administering these funds. And then 40% would be for nonprofits, which also, depending on their service model, could be some kind of direct assistance or some, it could pass through potentially that way. Is that, is that a correct understanding?
Yes. When we work with Community Crisis Center on the direct aid to households, they're going to work through coordinated entry with our other low-income housing providers or agencies. They'll work on duplication of benefits, so they're making sure that what they're funding is not funded by some other entity. And it might be a combination of they may make one month of rent, and they might pay utility bills. It'll be based on the individual circumstances, and we'll work out that final administrative plan of what we're paying for. You know, even if we pay two months of rent, that's two months of rent that frees up that household to pay for other expenses. And when you use CDBG dollars, we can't reimburse the family. We have to direct those payments directly to the landlord, the utility company. Their, their payment's made on behalf of that family. So we're not giving the check directly to the family, we're giving it to the person, you know, either the utility provider or the landlord.
Let me just rephrase. As to the 60-40 split, though, the 40% could be, depending on the service model of the nonprofit who'd be receiving those funds, they could be doing something similar. Is that fair that it, that?
Yes. Typically, the the funds for nonprofits have to be used for something that impacts them directly due to COVID. And we're going to prioritize based on, HDC used to prioritize needs, and it's basically your basic needs, it's homeless services. It's homeless services, mental health, childcare, and food. So we're going to limit applications to those basic needs. As we recognize that there are a lot of needs that agencies need, but we can only, we have to prioritize the limited amount of funds that we have.
You mentioned for the individuals that might reach out and community has the ability to make sure that there's not double dipping in a way, or they've got money from, individual got money from some place and got money from another place for either, for meeting their needs essentially. Because a lot of our individuals have multiple needs in our community. One of the, one of the questions I have is for these agencies that are coming to us, will there be a line item on that application that says what funding they have received from others? Whether federal, state, locally, funds that they've received? Because there is a lot of opportunities out there for individual agencies. And what other funding? Because if people have their budget already set for the upcoming year, what funding did they not receive for their budget? So I love our agencies and our community. But I think that if we want to make sure that we can stretch our money a little bit far, and if we're limited to those, I would say, human right, basic needs or just think are important, I think we do have to ask a few more questions to make sure that our money is stretching to the most, you know, effective way possible. There are other smaller agencies, and I'm not, this is not, when I say smaller, I'm not discounting some of our bigger agencies, but there are smaller agencies out there that are meeting the needs. And they may not maybe rise up to the top because maybe they don't have one of those, you know, titles of food, water, shelter, or something like that. But they're meeting a need during COVID-19. And so I don't want to limit personally to something, whereas, I don't want to limit it so much, but to allow for opportunity for a unique situation of an agency that's meeting COVID-19 in the ways that we may not even be aware of. I will approve this tonight. The one thing I'm just mentioning is just the application process. And I do agree with the 60 toward housing and the 40 towards agencies.
I just want to bring also another point is we need to help all the residents of Iowa City regardless of immigration status. I know that sometimes federal money is just have to be allocated to certain people. That's why as Iowa City, we have to think about all the residents who live in Iowa who are not going to be eligible for this federal grant, which is the 60%. How can we meet those people needs? That's why, yes, also, I will encourage staff to think, you know, about another money to allocate it from the city but get to the people who are not going to be qualified for the 60% out of the, like, the 410. So we can give that to the Community Crisis Center as well. So I do allocate it to the people who are not going to be qualified for the federal grant.
Any other questions for staff?
Just to comment that there is a fair amount of capacity within our NGO community. In addition to community, I know that Shelterhouse has a tremendous amount of experience dealing with these sorts of grants, administering them, finding housing, working with landlords. And so whether it's this grant or the next group to come, the set that comes around, I would urge that we use all the capacity that we have in this town.
All right.
Mayor, if I may, I just wanted to point out, in the staff report, we did mention that the city's Affordable Housing Fund does have $60,000 in it remaining in the Opportunity Fund. And as a reminder, the Opportunity Fund was meant to be council-directed to respond to unique circumstances that arise, whether that's something that comes out of HCDC or a request that comes before council. We noted in this case, you could deploy that $60,000 in tandem with this direct assistance. And to Counselor Saleh's point, depending on how the federal guidance comes on, comes out regarding whether undocumented residents will be eligible for CDBG funds or not. If indeed they are not eligible for the CDBG funds, our local funds, we can direct however we want. And so we could have a separate pot of money to support those residents that may not qualify for these. So you don't necessarily need to make that decision now, but I just want to make it, make it known to you that that $60,000 is available for this fiscal year and can be directed.
Good, thank you, Jeff.
Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? I see no hands raised. Further in council discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
MEMs?
Yes.
MEMs?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 17, City Steps 2025 Amendment Number One and Citizen Participation Plan. Resolution approving the Citizen Participation Plan and Amendment Number One to Iowa City Consolidated Plan for Fiscal Years 2021 through 2025. Can I get a motion to approve resolution?
So move by Saleh.
Move by Saleh.
I'll second Burgess.
Seconded by Burgess. And is there a staff presentation here?
Yes, I have a few comments on this.
Great.
Erica Kubler with Neighborhood Services. City Steps 2025 was adopted in January prior to our competitive allocation of CGB home funds. We have a couple of updates to our plan in our proposed amendment number one. First, the citizen participation plan has been updated and will be included as part of City Steps 2025. The plan identifies how people can provide input on our grant processes and how they can access public documents. The plan is largely the same as the previous one, but has been restructured and reformatted to read more clearly. We've also added some clarifying language on administrative and substantial amendments. Administrative amendments are fairly routine and can be done internally by staff, whereas substantial amendments are the like, the one we're reviewing today, require a specific public input process and contact period and public meeting. We added language where in the event of an emergency, we could do a public contact period of five days rather than 34 of substantial amendment to expedite the process. And that was based on recent HUD guidance. And we also incorporated our Fair Housing Study into the plan in the event that we wanted to update that. The second change with this amendment is the reduction of the minimum amount for a public facility project from 30,000 to 25,000. Steph feels that this is appropriate due to the CDBG version of assets requirement that was discussed previously in the meeting and was an oversight when we initially drafted the plan. And then the third change is that we have amended the plan to include language to allow us to fund activities to respond to COVID-19 by identifying this as a priority need. And this will allow us to fund activities in our FY21 action plan as necessary to respond to COVID-19. Thank you.
All right. Any questions or comments for Erica? Hearing none, is there anyone in the public that would like to address this topic? And seeing no hands raised, council discussion? Roll call, please.
Saleh?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yeah.
MEMs?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 18, Announcement of Vacancies Previous. Airport Commission, one vacancy to fill a four-year term. Community Police Review Board, two vacancies to fill a four-year term. Community Police Review Board, one vacancy to fill an expired term. Historic Preservation Commission, two vacancies to fill a three-year term. One vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Housing and Community Development Commission, three vacancies to fill a three-year term. Planning and Zoning Commission, two vacancies to fill a five-year term. Telecommunications Commission, two vacancies to fill a three-year term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, May 12, 2020. Airport Rezonement Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill an expired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. Item number 19, and we are going to Ryan, who has been with us since our work session from UISG. So please.
Hi, council. This is my, I'm happy to say this is my first time addressing the council as the city liaison instead of the deputy city liaison. And I'm excited for the coming year. First, before I get into my update, I just wanted to let, give Anna a chance to introduce herself. She's our new deputy city liaison. So Anna, do you just want to give an introduction to council?
Yeah, thanks, Ryan. Hi, everybody. I'm a second year at the university. I'm studying marketing and ethics and public policy with a minor in social justice. This is my first year on student government. So I'm really excited to work with you guys and really excited to work with Ryan. So, thank you.
Welcome.
All right. And so just a few updates, not too much as the university is still finishing its online learning. First, I wanted to say Ramadan Kareem, yamere pro tem Saleh, and all who are taking part in Ramadan during this time. So this has been a chance for me to learn more about Ramadan, taking Arabic at the university. And so Ramadan Kareem.
Thank you.
And then there is a new administration for the undergraduate student government. We just transitioned starting May 1st. So the new president is Connor Wolf, who's a senior. And the vice president is Mara Smith, who is junior, I believe. And so everyone is really excited to get to work this coming year. Next, the Renters Guide Survey, which is the survey that collects data for the Renters Guide, which will be published this fall, is out and is a chance for students to give feedback about their renting experience. So if you know any students in your lives, please share that with them. It's really helpful to students who sign leases in the fall to be able to see all of the different landlords and all the different housing options and their reviews from people who have rented from them. And you can find those on UISG social medias. They're all posted there. Lastly, I would just like to quickly comment about the letter that USG and GPSG sent to council this past week. The undergraduate student government and the graduate and professional student government are strongly advocating for relief for students and others during these hard times. Unfortunately, most college students have been left out of the federal relief packages while they're unable to work and still have to cover other bills and expenses. The discussion during the work session tonight was hopeful. And I know that I and the rest of UISG look forward to seeing what the city proposes in the coming weeks and at the next work session. And we want to thank the council for their work during these really hard times. I know that this is a very stressful time for everyone. And I just wanted to make it know of appreciation for all the hard work that you are contributing to the city during this time. And it does not go unnoticed. And so we hope that you are able to pursue a solution to these issues. And we wish you the best of luck. So that's all for me for tonight.
Well, great. Well, thanks, Ryan, for being a part and to Anna for being a part here tonight as well. We are going to go with city council information and updates at this time. And so I think we'll just go for it. Anybody chime in?
We met, the Rules Committee met on April 27. And we reviewed the amendment of the bylaw from the Iowa City Public Art Advisory Committee. They request, of course, everybody know about it on the consent agenda, they need to amend their membership from 7 to 9. And we did it and we recommended to you. I guess you approve it. That's the only thing that I need to report.
Well, this is Pauline. I'll follow Mazaher then, since I'm also on the Rules Committee with her. We don't get to meet very often, so it was exciting to be able to meet. It was a conference call, but it was, it was a good meeting. We had someone from the turntable's office, Sue. Thanks, Sue, and Kelly helping to answer any questions that we had regarding their proposed review, the changes to their bylaws. So we approved it overwhelmingly and as you saw in 60, what the changes were. I guess, so that's as far as any assigned committees for me, as far as any activities. May 29th was supposed to be the spring shop crawl for the downtown district. And as you know, as I've said before, I love those. I haven't missed one yet, I don't think. They're very exciting. It's fun to get downtown, see the shops and the variety of things that are offered down there. But unfortunately, with the COVID, they made a difficult decision to cancel that face-to-face kind of crawl. And they're going to do it virtually. And for those of you know that I'm pretty technically challenged, so it'll be an interesting thing for me. They're going to actually do it on May 15th, so next Friday via Zoom or just via the website. So we'll, we'll see how that goes, but I'm still looking forward to it. That's all I have to say.
I'll just mention that on May 22nd, so it's a little ways out there, but if you're interested, put it in your calendar. From 1:30 to 3:00, 1:30 to 3:00 PM, the University of Northern Iowa's Center for Energy and Environmental Education is holding a webinar on best practices for solar siting or for sitting solar. So I thought it would be interesting. And, you know, we just went through the, that Water Works project. There's a lot of interest in coming up with ordinances and best siting practices for such facilities. I think this would be an interesting one if you're interested in that topic.
EC cog finally met also virtually on April 30th. The regional transport will also likely benefit from the federal funding. With respect to the 380 bus, they, it is fully, it is 100% funded by Iowa Department of Transportation until 2023, as long as the interchange project is going on. So there's, there's no issue of counties or cities contributing to the 380 bus. They are continuing to run their ridership is down about 60% from their peak of 350. But interestingly, the majority in the mornings, the majority is southbound. 74% of the riders are, that are, that are coming are southbound mostly to UIHC. And in the evenings, they are now, at the peak times, they're now platooning buses to make sure that the people inside have enough space to sit fairly far apart. But it's, the service is still functioning. A couple of other quick things. John, you mentioned May 22nd. That's also going to be the last day to apply for an absentee ballot for the June 2nd primary. The, they're getting, I know that the Johnson County Auditor's Office is getting tons of absentee ballot, absentee ballot applications. The Secretary of State sent them out to all, the applications out to all registered voters. The Auditor's Office also has now drive-through absentee voting. You can drive, the office is closed, but you can drive bots up next to the Auditor's Office and vote from, from your car. So no reason not to vote in the, in the June 2nd primary. And I, and if, with your permission, I'd like to just add a couple of things about COVID that didn't have a chance to say before. I don't want people to get numb to the numbers. Please listen to stories because every person has a story. We've now reached the number of deaths in the United States where it's equivalent to the population of Iowa City. So taking Iowa City off the map. And a fellow city council member in Waterloo recently talked about a 19-year-old who has, who'd been a student of his, who just lost her father to COVID. She'd lost her mother to cancer last fall and is now has to take care of her two She'd lost her mother to cancer last fall and is, now has to take care of her two younger siblings. There are stories like that all over. We, as we start to reopen, even though we haven't met any of the CDC criteria, I really ask people to still stay home if you can, to please wear a mask or a face shield out in public, and to, to think of others. And I throw one more thing in there, which is childcare is going to be a big deal. Nobody, school has sort of been the childcare for many people, and now school is not in session. So it's going to be a huge challenge for people to be able to go back to work as we reopen if we can't figure out that piece. Thank you.
All right. Thanks to everybody that chimed in. And we're going to go to city reports from staff. City manager?
Do, I hate to keep this a little longer, but I forgot a couple of things in work session that I just wanted to toss out there real quick. One, maybe we pick up at your next meeting, but we, if you recall, we modified the summer meeting schedule, and I don't know if you want to rethink that. We're certainly okay keeping that, but we are going to every three weeks instead of every two. If you want to keep that schedule, that's great. But, you know, we did that a lot to accommodate travel plans and vacations and things like that. So I doubt we'll be having too many vacations if you want to get back on the regular schedule. Maybe we can make that decision at the next meeting. In your late handouts, you received a request for a letter of support from a medical cannabis oil dispensary that's looking to locate here. The state has opened up two licenses because they had to close. You may recall Mayor Throgmorton, after discussion with the council, submitted a letter of support for the same company a couple of years ago. Obviously, they weren't successful.
You're breaking up, Jeff. Can't hear you.
Apologize. Okay. Can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
Okay. We'll work on the summer schedule next meeting. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. In your late handouts, you got a letter requesting a, a letter of support for a medical cannabis oil dispensary that's hoping to locate in Iowa City. And you may recall that Mayor Throgmorton, after consultation with the council, submitted a letter of support for the same company a few years ago. They were not successful in the state's initial round two years ago when they did the initial RFP, and now they're going to apply again for two open spots. I just, if, if nothing has changed, we have some new members of council, but if nothing has changed, I can, I can work with Mayor Teague on a similar letter if council is comfortable.
I'd be fine with that.
Sure.
It's Pauline.
Sure. Fine with me.
Majority saying yes.
Okay.
Yes.
We'll, we'll work with you on that, mayor. And then in the work session, I also alluded to the Better Together Task Force or Project. That's that recovery, the, the more Johnson County-focused recovery effort. And again, they are hoping to get an elected official from each of the local governments. So if that's something you want to talk about tonight, I do think that they're planning to, to start meet maybe next, they're looking at Friday mornings and looking at maybe starting next week, I believe.
Something I, oh.
Go ahead.
Can you cut you off, Jeff? I was just going to say that's something I would be interested in being involved in.
Okay. Anyone else has any interest? It will be on Friday mornings.
I'd be interested, too. I'm, I'm favorable to Susan serving, but if it's the kind of thing that if somebody's unavailable or we would need an alternate, I'd be happy to help.
And I saw Councilor Weiner also raise her hand.
Is it more than one people? Certainly. Well, more than one person can be.
They're just looking for one representative from each of the elected bodies. And then the, the city managers are also going to serve as well as, I believe, the school district superintendent.
Okay. I guess we're fine with Susan Ma'ams. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry for the late entries there into your meeting.
So I do, I just wanted to make sure that I got at least majority of council appointing Susan for this. Is that what I?
That's fine.
All right. I, I have majority. All right. Thank you. Great. All right. Any more updates from you, Jeff? All right. We'll go to Ashley.
I think you know what I want to say, minding everybody about census. So mytwentytwincentsis.gov, please share with everybody you know. If there is not internet access, somebody doesn't have it, please share the phone number. I'll give it to you. This is the, the phone number for taking the census in English. They do have a variety of languages, so Chinese, Korean, Arabic, Spanish, French, Haitian, whatever, whatever you need. They have a variety of languages to serve people, but I will give the, the numbers are all different, but I'll start with the English version. It's eight four four three three zero twenty twenty. So eight four four three three zero twenty twenty. And they're available between seven AM and two AM Eastern Time. So a very long timeframe. People can even take the census right this very minute if they like, tonight. Okay.
Do you have, do you have a way to email the, all the language link so we can share it on the, like, emails for the network, like different people?
Yes, I can do that. I'll prepare it and, and send that out tomorrow. Is that okay?
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for the update. City Attorney Eleanor.
Nothing from me. A successful meeting. I didn't say a word.
That's a first, but no.
Good meeting.
Like, we, we're doing everything as it should be, right? Well, I'm not blacking the law somehow.
Yes. Well, to our city clerk, do you have anything? Kelly?
I have nothing.
Well, thanks. What people don't know is Kelly is texting me to make sure that I'm doing everything right. So thanks for all your help tonight. All right. Anything else for the good of this meeting before we adjourn?
Stay safe and stay home.
All right. Well, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved by Saleh. Second, Taylor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Here's my little gavel. Have a good night.
Hi, everybody.
See you, ma'am.
Bye.